Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The regular meeting of the Grossoio Township Planning Commission will come to order. Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item is the agenda. Our agenda is essentially a study session, a work session with the Smith Group on our master plan. Is there anyone who would like to add anything to the agenda? Hearing none on entertaining motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
So moved.
Motion from Eric, support. Dan, call a question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. The agenda stands. Public comment, there is no one in the audience at the moment, so we'll go past public comment and move straight to our topic for tonight is the work-study session on the Grossoio Master Plan. Little bit of background first. The master plan is the document that defines what Grossoio is today and what it aspires to be in the future. It encompasses key elements of our community such as recreation, environment, transportation, housing, among other things. The current master plan was approved in 2002 and is now due for an update. To this end, Grossoio hired the Smith Group as consultants to develop the new plan. Support and for this effort and leadership are provided by, first, Ross Cuero. Ross is our Community Development Manager and he is the Grossoio Project Manager and the primary contact for this project. Also providing leadership from Grossoio is the Steering Committee. This is a group of community leaders. They were selected with a diverse background to provide feedback to the Smith Group and direction as well. And so that committee has been meeting in conjunction with the Smith Group as time has gone on. The master plan update requires about a year to put together and it is targeted to complete sometime here toward the end of 2024. There are several key elements in completing this master plan process. The first is data gathering from multiple sources on Grossoio as it is today and then forecasting out statistically what it could be in the future. So data gathering is kind of the baseline to where we start. The next big element is public input. We need public input. We need to know what the citizens think about Grossoio, the good things, the things they don't like about Grossoio, and what they would like to see on Grossoio. This is a key element of the process because community involvement drives the master plan. To this end, the Smith Group has generated a survey which went out for which it was a preliminary surgery, initial survey, and it got a good response. This will be followed by other elements to get community input like a more detailed, in-depth survey as well as group discussions with targeted audiences on specific topics that are important to the community. So that's what's coming and you'll hear a little bit more about that specifically tonight. But, you know, it's very important as you sit out there to think about what Grossoio might be in the future and give us your input, very important for us. In the end, the master plan is fundamentally a planning commission document. After township board approval, it becomes the legal basis for any changes that the Planning Commission and Township Board might choose to make in the zoning ordinances or the zoning map. Consequently, the Planning Commission input is pretty critical to Smith Group and so tonight we're having a study session. And the study session will cover a number of topics and we'll be having discussion, we'll have receiver presentation and then the Smith Group will guide us through individual portions of this and we will provide feedback to help provide direction. Again, this is a work session, there'll be no voting tonight, it's simply discussion. And I'll stop at this point and turn to Ross over here as our Grossoio Project Manager to say a few words please and introduce our guests from the Smith Group.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I think the last time Catherine and Kathleen were here was in November of last year. So since then, they've gathered all the input from the community, we've had over 1,000 responses to our survey. So they gathered all that data, they're going to provide an engagement summary, they've audited all of our previous plans, so pretty excited to have them here to kind of present on all those factors. So Kathleen or Kat, whoever's next.
Thank you so much, John. Ross, very great introduction. We'll do our best to follow up.
See if you could pull that microphone up a little bit, it's very...
Absolutely, here we go.
You know, sometimes it doesn't want to cooperate.
Oh, definitely. I'm so sorry, I could lean down if you wanted.
Can we raise the lectern for? Make it easier for?
Okay, it'll be good for my squats. Yeah, I think so, I don't know, can you hear me all right right now?
Oh, that's perfect now, that's great. We want to make sure the audience in television land hears you clearly.
Perfect, sounds good. Thank you so much, John, thank you so much, Ross, for a great introduction. We'll do our best to follow as well. As John had said, this is a work session, so it's meant to be a lot more conversational. We'll try and keep our part pretty brief, but we did want to give a brief introduction in general of what we've been up to since we last met. We know that we've had a long holiday break, we've been quite busy as has our Steering Committee, several of whom I see here today. We'll also go over some of the key findings that we had through our prior plan audit, through some of those initial findings and spend the bulk of our time really chatting about what that means for our next steps going forward. So how we plan to use this when it comes to future conversations with the community, how we see this impacting this version of the master plan and how we see that changing based on what's been happening really over the past 20 years. So with that, when we're thinking about the phases in which we are working through this master plan, we've thought of it as three different phases. Phase one, which is understand, is what we had just completed, this was what we spent the bulk of last year working on. This is where we had met with you all, we got to have that wonderful visioning and values session with the DDA, with our board, to be able to chat about what are the shared common values of the community, as well as we got to have a survey that went community-wide through Red Alerts, through different booths from various organizations, which we are super grateful to all of those who boosted that through their own personal networks that helped us get quite a bit more coverage across the community. And we were able to then be able to synthesize that down into a couple of key shared values as well, which helps to inform us as we go through our data, when we go through those prior plans, what are we needing to focus in more on and learn more about as we go forward. Phase two, which is where we are now, is where we're doing a lot of the bulk of the work. This is where we're following up with key conversations about very specific topics. So no longer talking about generally what do we want for the future state of Grossoio to be, but to talk about what does that mean when it comes to housing, what does that mean when it comes to the places where you live, what does that mean when it comes to land use and zoning, and how does that impact people? And then finally, phase three, which is where we would be coming in at the very end of the year is when we're coming back and talking all about the adoption process, being sure that we're getting some of those final comments from people through the public comment period and going through the official process so that way you guys can adopt and start implementing. So with that, in phase one, just to kind of a quick recap of all that we've done, we had gotten to kick off our Steering Committee, we officially launched our website and our online platform, we were able to supplement that with work through your social media, through your code Red Alerts, we were able to do mobile workshops, so being able to visit onsite with you all and with others, looking at areas such as Commerce Park right across the street, looking at Waters Edge and seeing what our insights were on the ground with our team and with our experts over at CIB as well as from our team at Smith Group, and then synthesizing that online survey that we had mentioned. So with this, we had over 300 handouts that we had given out, we boosted on social media, we got over 1,000 total responses, which is around a 10% representation of the community, which is pretty good. And so with that, when we were synthesizing everything, as you'll see in your packets, we have several different materials, one of those includes an engagement snapshot. And so with this, there's a lot of detailed analysis, but overall, what that was able to help us synthesize was to confirm this vision statement that we had actually crafted the last time that we were here with you all in November, which is that Grossoio Township is a sustainable and tranquil community where residents of all ages thrive while preserving the island's unique character, exceptional recreation opportunities, and natural beauty. And so with us, we are going to be using this as really a guiding statement going forward for how we would like to see each of the different components of the plan, be able to support you all achieving this future vision. And to supplement that, we were also kind of able to synthesize four key community values that were recurrently mentioned when it came to the strengths and opportunities that people see, the challenges that you all face and that people want to see overcome, and the different areas that people wanted to focus. So with that, we see a lot of people mentioning preservation, the idea of being able to sustain what you all have, and being able to protect this environmental asset that you all have a counsel know and love and enjoy, as well as that sense of recreation and adventure. Of course, community and collaborative spirit was mentioned quite a bit, we had a bunch of different personal anecdotes from people sharing about their experiences growing up here, being able to be another generation and support their neighbors, and then safety was another one as well that was mentioned several times, both as an asset and as something that we want to see improve over time as we talk all about how we respond to natural disasters, we talk all about the future of the bridge and other aspects such as that. Sorry.
The bridge.
Oh, don't worry, it came up quite a bit as you'll see in the packet. So with that, we are now kicking off phase two, which is where we want to be able to spend the bulk of our time today. With phase two, we were looking at quite a bit of the existing conditions and this starts by looking at all of the great work that you guys have done to date. You all have quite a number of plans as you know, sorry, it looks a little bit stretched on this screen, perhaps this view will be a little bit easier to see, but as you know, throughout those plans, we pulled the latest and greatest to be able to synthesize in that prior plan's audit packet and look at what were the key takeaways, what are the things that have changed overall over these years, and what are the ones that we want to be able to synthesize and pull into ultimately the new master plan update? And so with that, we wanted to first start by focusing in on your prior master plan. What were its strengths, what were its assets, where do we need to focus our efforts going forward? So to start, we look at the Michigan Planning and Enabling Act, this is kind of the guiding source of what we would need to include within the master plan, and they outline these key buckets that we need to include: land use and zoning plan, physical development, transportation systems, and so on. Luckily for us, you all are part of the redevelopment-ready communities under MEDC, so they've already done an evaluation and they identified three major areas that they said need to have updates. So one is to include a zoning plan, being able to identify how your land use directly relates to your zoning, be able to provide a guiding way moving forward, and also to look at how your procedures can be streamlined going forward. We also want to include strategies for those priority redevelopment areas. For us, that means that we are looking at three different sites on Macomb Street that were identified by the DDA, we're looking at Waters Edge, and we're also looking at Commerce Park. And then also, when it comes to your implementation plan, really being able to bolster that so that way it's action-ready for your township staff, being able to add in a timeline, being able to add in responsible parties, being able to add in partnerships as well, because the township can't do this alone. At the end of the day, it will require coordination with the county, it will require coordination with MDOT and other entities, so being able to identify who those key partners are will be able to also bolster that plan going forward. We also decided to do a little bit of our own analysis with it, and so with that, we were able to see what we identify as some of our own goals as well going forward as a team between Ross, Kathleen, and myself and our team as well. So with that, we know that a lot has changed over the past 20 years, right? We're in a post-pandemic world, we know that there is an increasing trend in terms of people working from home, we know that there are incredible funding opportunities that are coming out right now through grants that we want to be able to leverage throughout this plan. We also know that the cost of construction and development has changed the landscape overall, and so we need to be able to adapt and refocus on that. And so with that, we've decided that in this plan, we would like to find ways to focus less on existing conditions and keep a more future-forward lens. So part of that will be by taking things like this existing community, the community snapshot that we have, which is a compiled document, when you see the final version, it'll be, I think, around 100 pages, right, of maps and data, really great comprehensive stuff that your township staff can use, but it'll be in an appendix at the end, so that way they can use it as a resource, but you don't necessarily need to flip through it every single time. Instead, we'll pull out those that are most relevant, put it into the plan, and the rest will be placed in an area for you all to look at for later reuse. The other one is to focus more on implementation, so looking at some of those action-ready steps, being sure that those are included and baked into your implementation plan, incorporating the latest trends, and lastly, making it really graphically rich and digitally friendly. It'll still be accessible via print, we'll be sure that it looks great once it's printed and you'll still be able to have it be legible, but also being sure that somebody can access it via their phone or via your township website as well to be able to look at it for future meetings and such. So with that, we wanted to pause for a moment and share a little bit about our view on the proposed new direction, which Kathleen will get into more.
Yes, we'll give Catherine a little talking break here. Kathleen Duffy, Catherine, Kathleen. Yep, so just yell out "Kat" and one of us will respond. So this is our proposed outline for the plan, so as Catherine mentioned, we think having things in an appendix that are resources makes sense there rather than making your plan too long. So the three things that we shared with you today will eventually be a version of that in the appendix. But you can see overall that, starting with a strong, what is this plan, what's it about, what are we, you know, planning on, like kind of introducing why, John's intro, he could have written the introduction for the plan, and then focusing right in on land use because that's generally the meat of the master plan, right, is the relationship between existing land use, zoning, future land use. So covering all of that in a section where we'll also get into some of the redevelopment sites. And then we've kind of narrowed down the topics, which is what we're going to talk with you next, on these housing, connectivity and mobility, economic growth and prosperity, open space and waterfronts, and quality of life. So for each of those, those are the main like topic chapters of the plan. So for each of those, we'll have goals, definitions, outcomes, what you're already doing related to each of those things, and some key policies. And finally, as Catherine mentioned, the implementation plan is going to be more robust than last time to make sure that it provides you with the how-to guide for how to implement the plan over time. And so there will be key priorities in there and, but also a decision-making kind of checklist so that when new projects or things come up, it'll help guide you to use the plan in a way that really impacts policy moving forward, and a more robust action matrix too, which is part of what Catherine described earlier. So with that, so again, John set us up really well, this is summarizing how we're going to talk with you now. So right, so when it comes to the master plan as a whole, things that we're thinking about, yes, we have that outline that I just shared, but topically, we really want to dig in with you next. So thinking about the prior plan audit, which is one of your resources, as well as community input, right? So I think it's important to know that all of these pieces have different levels of synthesis with one another and not one thing dictates what goes in the plan, they all have to kind of work together and be kind of juggled in this funnel, right? And data and trends. So on the upcoming slides, you'll see bits of each of these. So you have the three, like deliverables in your packets, and then we will go topic by topic, hitting on each of these things within those topics. So all of these pieces, both what we've seen in other locations that we think might work here, questions, we have questions for you on each of the topics that we need some direction on, but we're taking into consideration those three big pieces and all of the different parts of the plan. So first up, let's talk about land use. Again, we said the meat of the plan, let's start there, land use and development. So on each of these slides, you're going to see the sections of the master plan on the left, in the white there, that shows what parts of the old plan are merging and getting re-packaged into a new cohesive section on land use and development. So you can see here, engagement-wise, there was a lot of, there wasn't a lot of support for new development, which is not surprising. And so we need to dig into that more, I think with our next round of engagement, we'll be able to talk more specifically about key opportunities. I think a lot of that is just the nature of a survey, you can't really explain things very well, and so we want to talk about specific opportunities that we see and make it more tangible to people. We want to make sure that your land use descriptions are very precise, they're not, they're a little bit generalized right now, so we think we can be more precise and have a little less wiggle room in how things are described. Things that we've heard throughout the process from Derek and Ross and the Steering Committee is, and from you guys, via them, is reevaluating lot size requirements, talking about subdivision changes, and potentially looking at the Macomb Street District to kind of make some revisions there. So overall, the data is showing us that there hasn't been a lot of development in the last 20 years, and what there has been has mostly just been renovations of single-unit dwellings. Again, unsurprising, but it's changed a lot, right? And as Catherine alluded to earlier, this idea, post-pandemic, we're just in this kind of construction cost crisis, which means it's going to be really hard for anything very small to get developed just by sheer lack of economies of scale, right? So it's going to be a lot harder to have those small little one-off projects happen over time. So part of our ideas for this section of the plan moving forward is to make sure that we're hitting all those redevelopment-ready community requirements, looking at some of the different character areas that are already in your plan and aligning those to make sure that it really aligns with zoning in the future direction. And now we want to just kind of talk about some questions with you. So I'm going to tee up a couple of these. This first one, so the, and we should provide you with a link to this, so the Michigan Municipal League created a set of pattern book housing plans that can be used by communities that are like 90% architectural drawings to help eliminate the cost of that as being a challenge in the development world. So places like Kalamazoo and Battle Creek and others are pre-approving housing plans. That's probably, we'll have to see what you feel about that, but that's what that first bullet is getting at is so that there's, for smaller housing types, if they fit the character of the community, might those work here? But then in general, other things that we're going to open it up for John to kind of navigate, our first conversation here is around where should development happen, where shouldn't it happen, and then these three key zoomed-in areas of Waters Edge, Macomb Street, and Commerce Park. So with that, I'll turn it back over to your chair to guide the discussion.
All right, thank you. Well, there's certainly meat on the bone here to talk about.
Yep.
Okay, let's kind of take these by group if we can. I think the first issue is the idea of the pre-approved housing. A little question on that. A little question on that. You mentioned, you mentioned that uh your your thought was that was for smaller type houses?
Mm hmm.
As opposed to the custom houses that we see all over Groseal?
Yeah, not custom. Yeah.
Okay. And where where did these for Kalamazoo come from?
The Michigan Municipal League um sponsored a whole pattern book process the last couple of years. So it's for things like duplexes, accessory dwelling units. It's just free resources that the um, you know, it's equivalent of the MTA, right? So they're for cities and villages. And it's just this free resource of um housing like we used to build it in Michigan and haven't lately. So it would be the kind of thing that like if there were key infill sites or along, you know, having um attached kind of duplex things, like you can make things easier to get developed. Um, it may not be the right fit here. It was just an idea we had.
Sure. Okay. Well, let's let's talk about that first. Uh, let's see what people think about that. Just raise your hand if you have some comments you'd like to make about this as to the practicality. Anybody want to talk?
Yeah, I'll, I guess I have a question. So um I it wouldn't really fit necessarily the strategic plan of uh like the DDA area, but that to me in Groseal, that would be the only place I could see something like that potentially working where we want to, you know, develop and have you know, cosmetically, you know, a similar characteristic. It would be in like a a specific area, in my opinion. So I would think something like Hickory Island, which, you know, they're they all kind of maintain that similar, you know, um Macomb Street. But I don't know that that necessarily fits the character of the island either to
Right. It would be limited application here.
And I don't know that that's that residential building and development is necessarily a a problem or or stalled. I don't know. I'm not sure. I haven't been around long enough perhaps to see, but I don't know if if, you know, that would help benefit us.
Let's maybe reframe this as where might um more modest sized housing make sense? So right now, I think Macomb Street is an obvious, obvious place, but are there other areas where attached housing types or um other um potentially uh entry level kind of housing? Where might, are there are there places on the island where that might work?
Jay, you have some thoughts?
Yeah, I was just gonna, it it, one of the things that I recall talking about in November, I think it was, was um, you know, looking at what is available on the island. Uh, I think Ross sent around a a map um kind of sometime between then and now uh that showed where there were developable properties. Um, and, you know, generally, as as was noted in earlier in the presentation, you know, most of the construction has been either remodeling uh or somebody had a double lot and they split it off and built one house in the middle of a neighborhood or, you know, something like that. Uh, you know, so I I would picture something like this being more like a new subdivision as opposed to sticking them in the middle of of neighborhoods of houses that don't match the style or things like that. So either like Macomb Street as as Angela suggested, or, you know, some new subdivision somewhere that I don't know where that would be. Um, because we don't have a lot of those kind of big developable properties where somebody would put a new subdivision. So that that those are kind of the ideas that I had where, you know, Macomb Street came to mind for me as well, but then also is there a, you know, a place where there's, you know, 100 acres or something like that? I don't know how much it would take to do something of any size, as you suggested. Smaller things are also not um very appealing right now financially, so.
Yes, go ahead, Dan.
I think one, one challenge for any residential development is is trying to find properties to build them on. Uh, but one, one area that I thought of in particular that is largely one property is where the current Meridian School is. The plan is to tear that school down and that is zone residential. So and so right now, the only thing you can build there is residential properties and and I don't know if the school has any plan. I can't imagine they have plans for that property in the future, but that is one option for a larger like subdivision type development.
Thank you. Kyle, you had some comments?
Sure, um, I have a lot actually, but I'll try to keep it brief. So um, I hear you on what you're saying on the construction cost crisis and why, you know, economies of scale with this are difficult with smaller development. But how I'd reframe that or talk about it differently is, I mean, you can see from your survey, so many folks have lived here for a very long time. So are just very invested in the community now. I'm not going to say that cost isn't a a consideration. Um, but for most folks, when they're thinking about building something, I think like local folks, it's not really so much that is just finding a way to continue to live here, I would say, you know, so um, I would really look at the smaller uh possibilities. Um, and the suggestions that I'd I'd look at is actually some of the bigger lots and finding ways to allow folks with bigger houses, bigger lots to to have some of those accessory dwelling units. I'm not necessarily saying like a duplex that doesn't feel right to me, but more like um, I don't know, an attached garage or something which our zoning doesn't, or sorry, not detached, a detached garage which our zoning doesn't currently allow. Uh, and maybe like an apartment above that. Um, and I want to give examples of, so a lot of our of our development for a long time didn't have the zoning that we currently have. So there actually are a lot of housing types that have those accessory dwelling units that were built before our current zoning regulations. So on West River, I can give examples, but probably the more public examples would be um, the uh Groseal Historical Society has a little apartment on top of its little uh uh building, the Customs House. This isn't really accessory dwelling unit, but just to give you a sense of like the history here and how you can see it, there's a Colonel Broadhead's little office on East River. If you go past it, there's like this tiny little old, very old structures, one of the oldest on the islands. And you can just see like there's the big house next to it and there's a tiny little house just right there. And so for me, those are examples of the sort of things that we, I I'd really encourage us to look at. You're right, Macomb Street is probably the place where I hear most folks being like, yeah, we need more density there because folks realize like in order for that 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 business district to thrive, we need more people there. Um, I think I even heard it when um when we were at a recent public hearing, Ross, we had local residents coming in saying, hey, we need, we need to develop a Macomb Street more. So that that's where some of the maybe the bigger uh multi floor, uh multi family housing could be thought of in terms of economies of scale. But what I really focus on is um is allowing more people to do uh things with what they already have. And and I've gotten very positive feedback. You're right. A lot of folks are hesitant about development. Folks are also hesitant about more taxes. So you try to explain like, hey, we gotta allow more development to to spread the tax burden out. But when you explain to folks like, hey, you can do, I want, I want to allow you to do more with what you already have, within reason, of course, uh, and and you're talking about that, finding good ways to to just very tastefully say, these are things you can do with with the land you already have. Folks are definitely supportive. When I explain like, hey, you can't build an apartment on top of your garage, people are surprised at that, you know, so um, that's the sort of thing that I would really encourage us to focus on and 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 put out there more.
Thank you. Additional thoughts? Yeah, I I uh I tend to agree with uh with Jay about the fact that uh you know, uh, right, right now, as we look at the island, it's it's basically infill development. You know, that's that's the that's the the real driver in in the residential districts. And infill development needs to be in the character of the of the neighbors that are around it. And I and and it is. Uh, and in fact, you know, in an infill development, there is no, there is no planning commission input. I mean, the lots there, the standards are there, it goes to the building department, the community development department manages this. They evaluate it. And if there if there are issues that that warrant a variance or something like that, you know, it's brought through the the more complicated planning or zoning processes. Otherwise, um, it just basically sails too administratively. Of course, with all the inspections and the and and the things that the township typically does, um, you know, which I don't think would change, uh, regardless of what's being built, whether it's whether it's a a pre designed building or one that a developer brought in, I think, I think that uh Ross and his people would would follow the same basic process to make sure that it was constructed properly and 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 up to code. So um, you know, as far as Macomb Street is concerned, um, you know, you know, there is an opportunity for for right away for the small, smaller housing. In fact, there's one. I mean, we looked at one as we as we took our walk around Macomb Street, uh, you know, as it as it crossed near Park Lane. You know, a brand new house fit on a 40 foot lot. You know, in that particular case, uh, the owner of the property maybe 10 years ago proposed a very large business and it did not meet the fire code. I mean, it was not enough access for for uh a driveway to get to the rear of the property, which is a requirement of our fire department. And so and so the plan was was not approved by the planning commission. But then turned around and now a very, it looks like a very nice house, you know, is being built, which fully complies with with all of these the standards. So, you know, if we could have more of that, okay, um, you know, uh, I I think that uh it worked out pretty well.
Let's, on Macomb Street, so that's a single family house on Macomb Street? Where do that, where does that make sense? Um, probably not all of Macomb Street. I mean, parts of it, right? Are there other changes that you wish certain things could happen on Macomb Street?
Well, you know, we have in our in our ordinance. And this is something I think, remember Jay, we put in years and years ago, Eric, you know, about the uh about the attached housing uh for Macomb Street. Uh, I forget exactly what it's called. We've
The brownstones.
Brownstone, brownstone housing. You know, we we put that in a number of years ago with with the idea of encouraging you know, higher density in that in that area.
And it just hasn't panned out.
You know, it, you know, for whatever reason, you know, there wasn't a developer interested in in pursuing that, but um, it's it certainly fits with the direction that uh that we're talking about.
Well, keep keep in mind, it's not just Macomb Street, it's Macomb Street District, right? So it's also parts that grow, grays.
Yeah, yeah, actually, yeah, Gray's Drive.
Just Macomb, it's that area.
Macomb District actually covers Gray's Drive as well, and people forget that. And so, and you know, there there may not be as much vacant property as 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 Eric says on Macomb Street. But you you go one block over, you're still in the Macomb Street District and and there may be more opportunity there. Perhaps that's a, uh, there's land over there for some sort of additional senior housing. I mean, that is an ideal spot for senior housing. Maybe I'm getting off track here, but but uh, you know, it was, it was, it was placed there and approved there specifically because you know, it was right in the center of the community. It's in walking distance to the grocery store, walking distance to the drugstore. You know, you're you're, you have it as a community there and it worked out. You know, they built a beautiful building and and uh and services the commuter needs. Maybe there's more opportunity there for that.
We'll look at the map and see if we can find some spots where townhouses and senior housing might fit along in the Macomb Street District. It's my fun land use job.
I've been kind of rambling on about this, but
Yeah, let's talk about Waters Edge. Yeah.
What I, I think, what I think about Macomb, we need, if we get more people on Macomb Street, that's going to do
Right.
wonders for businesses. It's going to make it more of a community. And and, you know, if we can find a way to encourage that some way, it would be great.
So I always think of and I not, and I don't know that by design it worked like it was um planned, but um Cherry Hill Village and Canton. Um, are you familiar with that development? So I mean, that was kind of more of like a celebration of Florida, like let's create this community neighborhood out of this huge property. Um, and you know, something along that line could work. I always thought on Macomb, it, those are larger homes. They were, they, you know, are maybe a bit more expensive than, you know, what I would think of for for our district in that case, but something along that line where it they even they their uh garages don't face outward, they face the rear. I mean, they have alleys and and, you know, things like that, but that way the front porch is everyone is truly out on the street and in the, you know, in this community area. And then they built buildings, they have a theater, they, you know, it's, it was like they they had this forced uh little community um scenario. And to me, something like that would would serve well in that area. And to Eric's point, maybe not even just on Macomb or even just Grays, but just kind of, you know, all within that walking distance and that, you know, um, I mean, I don't know if Groseal Parkway is the best route either, but just in walk, within walking distance in those areas. Um, or even more accessibility from across the street.
Is there opportunity at Waters Edge? Do we, do we? What are your thoughts there on anything happening development wise or just staying recreation? Um, because when it comes to like where there are places that are potentially underutilized, that's one of them. And then our other thought was Commerce Park. And so like in terms of having the scale like for impact of something like that, um, obviously we have the limitations of Commerce Park. We're trying to dig into what those are actually are and and see how we can put things. But you know, the the Commerce Park Plan has a little town center. And so if we still like that idea, we can keep pushing and trying to figure out how to get exactly what you're talking about, like walkable businesses and housing.
Well, let's let's talk a little bit specifically about Waters Edge. You know, one of the things that I saw from the survey that came back was that that people weren't weren't thrilled about the level of recreation on the island. Okay. And what what could be done, what could be done with Waters Edge to improve it? I mean, what do we have there now? We have the swimming pool. Okay, we have basketball court. And there used to be, what was it, a roller rink or an ice rink?
Yeah, there's some semblance of an ice rink. It just, yeah.
Something like that.
Ice has to be made, but yes, there's, there is a property that
Okay, and then there's a driving range.
Yeah.
And then there's of course the golf course, which takes up most of the room. Now, on the golf course, they also have um, one of these things where you kick a soccer ball, you know, it's like playing golf with a soccer ball. Okay, that's out there too. I've seen, you know, when I, several years ago, when I was out there, I saw kids, you know, playing with that. You know, but, you know, is that, are there, are there ways that 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 could be enhanced? And I don't know exactly how, but um, you know, because, you know, golf, the the golf opportunity out there, I, you know, I I don't know what the usage is. That would be something that statistically, you know, the township would know in all this, but you know, it typically, from what I remember, is is kind of a senior citizen sort of uh golf course. Why? Because it's short. Okay, uh, it's very close to being around home. You don't have to go very far to drive to it. And you're not going to be out there with a bunch of pros, you know, saying hurry up and go faster. Okay? Because it's not that kind of course.
Right.
You know, so, you know.
We are going to have a workshop on it. So we will dive into this more with one of our landscape architects. So if there are key things that you want us to explore ahead of that workshop in about a month, now is the time to give us your ideas so that we can brainstorm a little bit before we come back.
Well, when I, when, when, when I was on that that tour with with you guys, you know, we talked about the possibility of that it may be underutilized.
Right.
Okay, I don't know it is, but if it is, then then maybe one portion of it of maybe you don't have to have a nine hole golf course. Maybe have a three hole golf course or something like that, just for
Right.
Okay, and 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 then that land becomes an option for um for some sort of of residential use. There's always, there's the water there already, so it's water access. Uh, you know, and it is controlled by the township, which means you would have, you'd be able to to dictate exactly what it is that you want in the way of housing, where, you know, any other private property, you can't dictate that.
Right.
The developer is going to build what the developer is going to build to make money. But if you have, if if the township sells the property, it can be stipulated as to what is acceptable and what is not.
And there could be, if we let you develop on a portion of it, these are the expectations we have for recreation improvements to the rest of the site.
Yeah, and it seems to me that not even, I don't, it's, it always seemed to me there's a lot of property there that's just not utilized at all. So aside from the fact that there's nine hole golf course, like it seems like and maybe I'm wrong on that, but there's property all around that's surrounding, that's just green space or unused space or the gravel and, you know, there's a lot of possibilities there, I guess. Um, and to your point, I'm not sure how often the, you know, the basketball courts and the volleyball and the ranks and everything else are are utilized. It would be interesting to me. Are like, are those things that the community even wants? Or is there other types of recreation to your point? Yeah. Have things changed?
Yeah.
Well, we've got a recreation master plan as well, right? So I haven't looked at that in a while. I don't know what it says about Waters Edge, but certainly it's in the control of the rec department as of now.
It's pretty status quo, but there was a um redesign for it. What was the?
Updoted 2011.
Yeah, so um, it's, it's been a while, but there is an existing kind of strategy um, for that area that's included in the Parks and Rec Plan.
Well, it's like you, it's like you, you were saying, nothing, nothing is free. I mean, if you, if you take the property and propose it for use for housing, now you've got senior citizens who have said there aren't enough senior activities on this island. You know, who who and now have, are going, it's going to be taken away. So
The balancing act?
It's a balancing act. It absolutely is. Maybe and maybe there's ways to find, you know, middle ground.
I I think the community would would is would strongly support any type of recreation. Uh, one example is the bike path. You know, anytime a mill comes up for the bike path, it's, it always passes as well supported. So for the the Waters Edge Recreation Area, I'd hate to see anything taken away. Can we utilize it better? I think I think it's a good possibility. Um, it's nice to have a nine hole golf course, but is is there a better option that better fits our community? Do we need to have more options for our younger community as opposed to, I I would see golf as more for the older community as opposed to teenage kids and whatnot. Uh, we want to keep everyone busy, keep our, keep our kids busy. Uh, we wanna keep everyone busy, keep our, keep our kids busy and keep them out of trouble.
Yeah, that's a great point, I think, too.
Yeah, I, I, look, I think everybody should be golfing every day, don't get me wrong. So, but I do, anecdotally, I had two daughters who worked in the, in the golf shop over there at different times, and they would come back and tell me how many people played in a day, and it was shockingly low.
Okay, that's helpful to know.
I know, that's anecdotally completely, so, you know, there are actual numbers that show what the usage is, I'd be interested in seeing what that is.
Do you feel, Mr. Fucci, that, that, that nine-hole, because we have two other private golf courses on the island, do you feel that, that nine-hole golf course fills, fits a function for the public, or, I, I don't know?
I would've thought so. I, I really, I mean, I, I grew up playing there, um, you know, I played there with my dad, and, you know, it's, it's, um, you know, I, I, it would be, it would be difficult to see it go, um, because it is, I would've thought, you know, and, and even if just being able to say we have a public nine-hole course on the island, I think is a good attraction for new people. Uh, it's just, and, you know, is, is it in, in effect being utilized?
Yeah.
Um, and I, I just wonder if it's, uh, you know, you've got basically flat, open land on the south side that could be developed, and the north side could remain as either a practice facility or a, uh, you know, three holes, something like that. Or it could just be a big park, right? And that could be used for waterfront access, um, being able to, you know, kind of see the sunsets and, and, you know, and access to the existing and expanded recreational facilities on the north side. But if it's used, I'd love to see it stay. I mean, it's, it's an institution, and, um, I just, I look at, when I hear numbers like, you know, 12 people went out on a nice day on a Saturday, it's like, are you kidding me? Um, so I don't know if that's true or not, but that's, that's, you know, a lot of land that's being used for not a lot of activity.
One thing to keep in mind on that, too, uh, they have, uh, in, in the past, you know, I've been over there when, when they're giving lessons, golf lessons, for the kids. And it's just packed with kids, you know, at the driving range, okay? And, and so, some elements of it, you know, fit, fit clearly, you know, with the youth that we're talking about, we're trying to get to. I mean, those kids are over there having fun, and that's good.
I mean, I, I thought, I was on the Rec Commission previously before I was on the board. I will say, uh, there's a couple of things that, that I thought a lot about on this with, is, and first of all, is, Rec is, has trouble thinking long-term in terms of its funding and its maintenance, so, you know, the budget's balanced, Rec is strong, I wanna be very clear, but the long-term maintenance of that course could theoretically be a drain on township finances over the income that it brings in, so that's just a, a financial consideration from the township's perspective. I think any kind of change would probably have to be very publicly put out there, uh, either through public hearings, maybe even a vote, if there was something like that. I will say some of the history there, John Rathell's not here, but I know when he was on the board, or at some point, he did ask for like, a, a plan to be made up of, of single-family housing that could go where the golf course went. I, I wouldn't necessarily support something like that. But I, I think, whether you touch the golf course or not, there's definitely ways that that area can be utilized better. Um, even just the Marina side, so right now, it's, it's pretty packed. I guess, maybe not, now some of the boats are out, but when, when, in winter time, when there's winter storage, you can see the boats are just like packed in there like, like, like crazy, but when the boats are out in the water, there's a good amount of, of space, just even on the Marina side, uh, that I think can be better utilized. Even something, I don't know what it would cost nowadays, but something like a boat ramp is something that I hear mentioned very frequently, is something that people would like, um, and I think could, could benefit, uh, islanders. But, uh, but yeah, I mean, I mean, there's just so much that can be done there. And, and I, and this kind of goes back a little bit to Macomb Street, but I do wanna find ways to ask this question, because I think it's important. I'm not saying we, I don't know, I'm not sure, but nowhere on the island, I think, is anywhere built above two floors. We have some pretty big, tall, two-floor structures, but like, is it worth thinking about, um, three-story type things? You know, either on Macomb Street, or even there, you know, at Water's Edge. Um, if you build up, you're able to add more housing, add, add things like that. I think, you know, that's something I wanna, I'd wanna ask the public about. Um, I, I think, I might, my, my instinct would be that the public would be against something as tall as three stories, because it's kind of outside the character of the island, but it's something I'd wanna ask about and think about with developments. And something like Water's Edge above, above the restaurant there, or something like that, could be apartments or something like that, you know? Uh, so those are things I'd wanna, I'd wanna consider and think about in places like that.
You know, another thought about Water's Edge, as I keep throwing out things here, uh, kayak launch, okay? Uh, there was a lot of discussion about that years ago, remember that?
Yeah, it has one, yeah.
Did it actually, actually, they have one?
Yeah, it's got a nice one, yeah, it's got a really nice one, yeah.
Okay, I wasn't sure.
Yeah, there was, yeah, yeah. Um, yeah, I know, I know quite a bit about kayaking, too. There's, there's kayak launches at Sunrise Park there, um, and I would say, I'd say they're utilized well and will likely be increasingly utilized. Uh, probably not as much now as, well, there was a kayaking club led by Kathy Walker that she kind of led for a long time and hasn't continued, so that, that use has come down. But overall, you see a lot more kayakers along the river than, than you did before.
You know, another potential opportunity might be to somehow integrate with JIRA. You know, JIRA has sports activities all over the island. You know, what, what would Water's Edge offer, uh, to JIRA? Maybe something, maybe nothing.
Question?
Mm-hmm.
Well, shall we move to, uh, the Commerce Park?
Yeah.
I do think, I would like to just say for Water's Edge, I'd love to hear the public input about the pool as well. Um, because I know, it, I, speaking about long-term investments, and I know there's been talk, you know, I, when we first moved here, there was, you know, talk about a sprayscape and just other uses of that pool area. So I'd love to get public input on thoughts on that, and usage and things like, yeah. Like other, you know, just, I mean, you know, other, I know there's a lot of input from the public on the desire to have an indoor pool, which I know that's a whole, that's a, an entirely different, um, investment. But I'd love to just get some input, because we are, you know, investing in a pool that's outdoors, that meeting the needs. And if not, then maybe we use that in a different way.
Well, I, I, yeah, well, we're talking about facilities, the rink has been a struggle. There is a rink there, but it's been a struggle to get it utilized well. And I think, I think they might've just gotten out of debt after having built it a long time ago. Um, but that's been a struggle, that rink there, yeah.
Maybe, uh, you know, something like a splash pool.
Right, yep.
You know, something that wouldn't cost an arm and a leg, but, but yet would still attract kids. Lots of possibilities.
More possibilities of, of recreation plus other stuff at Commerce Park, right? So, um, you know, a lot has shifted since that plan, um, was written, and, and we have some thoughts on, potentially how you could update the airport zoning district and things like that to allow for a little more flexibility of uses and things, but you are limited by the federal government owning the land there. But, um, you know, the, the way that industrial has shifted since that plan was first written, um, you know, we're just, it's shifted to mostly transportation-related uses, right? So trucking and warehousing and stuff like that, which, as an island, isn't the best use. So thinking of different types of industrial, or, um, one of our ideas is, uh, like coworking space, like, it's a perfect spot for startup businesses or home, you know, if people are working from home to either on Macomb Street or at Commerce Edge, to have a place where they could go and get away from the dog for an important meeting or whatever, right? So, um, but also, like, up near Meri, where Meridian, where the school kind of borders Commerce Park, I'm just wondering if there's, again, there's some legal things we have to, um, work out with. Could housing work there? But to me, that's like a logical border, it borders the Hawthorne neighborhood, and, um, there could be some possibilities there. So, yeah, any, any thoughts on, I mean, we're gonna be talking to the Commerce, um, Park Board as well, so, or Commission, Commission, Airport Commission?
Hmm.
Commerce Park Commission and Airport Advisory Committee.
Advisory Committee, thank you.
A lot of words, yes.
One, one question before we get too far to Commerce, Commerce Park. Well, how, what portion is billable and not owned by the government? I know a large portion of that is owned by the government.
All of it's owned by the government.
So all of it is, so, so it, it would be a huge challenge for anyone who wants to build even a small residential house on it, would be a huge challenge.
We are looking at our, what would the ways to overcome that be? I don't have an answer yet, but we're trying. Has, because we're looking, did we get the deed and like legal stuff to Justin? Our partners at CIB Planning were gonna help us kind of like look through the, the backup, how all of the ownership works and stuff.
And how far does the land go? So border, it's borders like right where Meridian, like, like the wooded area with the trail, where, where the kids cut through there? That's, that's all airport land, okay, okay.
There's, I think there's a wetland, too, on the, on the, on the west side.
Yeah, yeah.
No, I thi, I mean, personally, I think that would be an interesting thing to entertain. You know, I, I struggle with the need to have, you know, so much industrial space on an island. I know when, um, you know, when they were rebuilding across the way, there was talk about trying to bring in like Makerspace-type, you know, folks, or like DIY, you know, woodworking, just different types of commercial, not commercial type uses. And those spaces rented, I don't know if they still are, but they leased out pretty quickly when they were built, so I, there was a lot of interest. But, um, but I do, I struggle with how much more, and we have all of the vacant space here as well. So, um, I would love to know if that's a possibility. It seems like a better use of the land.
I do think we have to be careful, um, on the topic of recreation again. A significant part of the land is used for recreational activities now. Soccer fields, and I know JIRA uses it for softball and baseball and football. Uh, so if we did something grand there, we'd be eating into existing recreational space that would likely need to be replaced somewhere, so.
I think they can coexist. There's room.
I mean, one idea that I had years ago was, uh, like, senior center down here? That would be varying levels of, um, of, you know, senior from independent housing to, uh, you know, all the way to dependent, or what, I don't figure what the different terms are.
Continuum of care.
Okay, I like that term. And then people could be shuttled down to Macomb Street to do their shopping and things like that. We now have a big storage space that's taking up a lot of the, uh, available space there. Uh, and then, you know, that doesn't leave a ton of room for that sort of development anymore without eating into the recreational activity. That's why I think of that.
I was also gonna bring up senior housing, and reason being is because there's no other housing I can think of that has more tax support, what we're funding from the government, you know, for, to support, um, like senior housing does. A lot of our tax dollars, you know, people with, you know, older people with, with very limited income are allowed to live in these facilities, you know, and so it helps seniors out. So, most, most, uh, other than, you know, very low income, they're not getting much assistance to live there. And, and I'm wondering if that extra assistance will help bridge that gap where you can't get a loan to, to, to build houses on, on that portion of property.
On that note, though, and I don't want this to sound over, overly like selfish, I guess, from that perspective, but we need, we need to improve our revenue, we need to improve our tax dollars as well. So I don't, I, I truly, I mean, I want to provide housing, um, accessibility for, you know, all of the residents, and I think it's important to have opportunities for the seniors to continue living on the island. But if we're gonna look at really developing, we need to make sure that we have more tax dollars coming in, not less. So however that would work, I think that's an important, I mean, I, if we're gonna have more affordable housing, we're, we're still bringing in considerably more tax dollars than, right, than a government subsidized senior housing unit. So I, just something to consider.
Well, factors on Commerce Park and Macomb, or on, and Water's Edge are, you know, the fact that both are, both are basically isolated from neighborhoods, which means that there's, there's more opportunity to have something that's different when you're not right next door to the subdivision across the back fence. So.
Oh, yeah.
No, it's, it's just another factor to consider.
I know you guys are gonna meet with the Commerce Park Commission, I think they're a great commission, because they think about this a lot, and they have to do it in a, in a economically sustainable way, because they don't get any, any support from villages or anything like that. So, that is a limiting factor for what they do, and I'd be curious to see if the township can support them in some of these things, if it's worth figuring out ways to do that. The, the one element I suggest, maybe even just a conversation, is talking with Jim Cordis over here at the Pilot House. Um, so he has a very unique circumstance, and I think it's a good example of how a lot of things run here on Grozeal. Uh, you know, his family's run, his father ran that, uh, the Pilot House, and now he runs it, but he doesn't really have any kind of economic stake, and he doesn't own it, you know? Um, I mean, he has economic stake in a sense, he has to run it, get, collect rents, et cetera, but, um, it's really hard for him to continue to maintain that structure, maintain things there. Um, and, but it's a, a very vital structure, as you can see, like, there's, it's one of the few hotels on the island, places people can go. I know when we've, we had, uh, power outages, that's where I'd bring my 80-year-old aunt, my, you know, my little infants, because they needed, you know, heat or something like that. Um, and you can see right now, there's a ton of boaters right now in the, in the parking lot. And, uh, so there, it feels to me like there's an opportunity there to either support what's going on there, figure out ways for the township to encourage what's going on there. Um, and there's just, uh, incredible history there, too, so, um, that, that's one, uh, place I suggest you reach out to and figure out ways we can support through, through Commerce Park, yeah.
You know, just for what it's worth, uh, prior, if, if you go down the, the, uh, let's see, be the west side of the airport, it's, there's Rio Road over there. There used to be military housing there, and it was a large, it was a large multifamily structure, okay? That, uh, ultimately fell into disrepair and was knocked down. But I mean, I, I don't know how many units that thing had.
I think it's, I think it's in the noise contour.
Sorry?
For the, for the, um, for the airport, I think it has limitations because of the runway, that's too close to the runway, something, we, because we looked at it, and the noise contour, which is the like.
Did you?
FAA stuff, yeah.
Okay.
We'll look at it again, but I'm pretty sure that we weren't sure it would work now over there, like they would let us build, but we'll look.
Just a thought, and because I don't, I, I, I don't know if that's actually part of the airport district or not. You know, it may not have the same, um, lease constraints that, uh, the rest of the property does, it's just, I don't know, just things to think about.
Indoor pool there, too, right? Let go away.
Okay, are we ready to move on?
Yeah, yeah, so we've already like touched on a lot of hous, of the housing stuff. Um, I think, you know, again, it's hard for people to know that there is a challenge with housing if they have a house and they're happy in their neighborhood and haven't tried to move lately. Um, so we're gonna talk about this more in the second phase, but, um, I think, you know, this was one of the key charges when we were hired to do this project, was to try and figure out where more housing can go, what's missing. Um, so we have done a, uh, housing needs assessment, and we'll be sharing that back with you. Um, and I think, you know, much of what we've already talked about, where the density makes sense, um, and making sure that your zoning isn't precluding anything that makes sense. Um, and so, I think by just nature of the island generally having higher values and, um, higher, um, you know, all this, this, just the single family, you're a bit of an anomaly downriver, right? And so, um, how are there, are there places that, like, you've already described along Macomb Street and others to have alternatives to the single-unit detached housing? And, and we're gonna try and, and see where that makes sense and make sure it fits the character. Um, and so that's where these, you know, the neighborhood types, um, that are in your current plan, you know, kind of, working with those and tweaking them a bit. So, yeah, I think this idea of, also to the point of aging in place, you know, aging on the island, what does that look like? Are people able to stay in their homes? If they need to downsize, can they on the island? Should they be able to, is the other question. They probably would say yes, but if they want a smaller yard and don't wanna deal with the flights of stairs, like, are there, you know, smaller ranch-style homes? Not a lot, um, right? And so, let, just trying to be cognizant of both, you know, young families and like both ends of the spectrum, right? The people who are looking to buy that can't, and the seniors and baby boomers that might be ready to move out of their house but can't, because it costs too much to downsize, right? So we're kind of like backed up at both ends. This goes beyond Grozeal, I mean, this is the state, national challenge right now. Um, and so, trying to do what we can to help alleviate some of those challenges. So when it comes to housing, we've kind of talked about this, um, I guess, just, just based on what I just said, does anyone have any reactions? We don't have, we've already talked about a lot of it, so if there's any other remaining housing comments, otherwise we'll move to the next section.
Okay, uh, let's look at some of these specific questions. What types of housing do people most want to see and why? What defines housing character across Grozeal's neighborhoods? And what does affordability mean for current residents, new residents, and future generations? Yes. Okay, uh, who wants to start? Let's talk about the character of our neighborhoods.
I'll jump in, I'll jump in. So I, I mean, I think the character of the neighborhoods is a tough one to define on Grozeal, because I think that really, when I think about it, there is, uh, I thi, and I've mentioned Hickory Island, I feel like there, that's, you know, very, um, more defined in, in the expectations of what you see and, and what the area looks. and, and what the area looks like. Um, and then there's the, you know, new build subdivision off of Meridian. I can't think of what it's called right now. It's probably the newest, Wind Outwood, thank you, newest development. And then, um, and then the, you know, the subdivision, uh, subdivisions off of Church on either side. Um, and those are a bit more, you know, family oriented, I guess, those subdivisions in particular. But otherwise, I really feel like it's, there's, you can almost tell generationally who the builder was that, that, you know, lopped up about eight or 10 or 20 of these lots all across, you know, the island. And you can drive by and say, oh, that's a Kraus house or that's, or whatever, whomever the builder was at that time. So, um, I think that kind of is the character of Groseal is that it, that there isn't one specific look or design, um, of the homes. Um, but when I think in terms of affordability, um, for folks who are looking on Groseal, I think there, there's a couple of things that happen. Number one, um, you know, a large portion of the homes are not one level. They're, they're multiple levels. Um, they are, you know, maybe a bit more traditional. They're not updated, um, they're outdated. Um, and so when people come in and they say, okay, well, the list price is, you know, 425,000 and I could get a brand new build for 425,000 across the bridge or I could come in and, you know, and either, um, you know, kind of lessen my expectations of the design and the mobility of the home and live in it, you know, can I stand to live in it for the next seven years while I, while I redo it? And can afford to redo it or do I buy this new build home? So I think that's part of it. Um, so, because what I find, you know, there's a lot of conversation about tax dollars, um, what the property taxes are, what the water bills are, what, you know, things like that. And, and really, when I look at, I have several friends across, just specifically Wayne County. And what we get for the property taxes we pay and the utilities, it's really, it's pretty standard, it's pretty standard stuff. But where we kind of lose in that affordability is the amount of house or the type of house that we can, that we can buy here. So someone starting out, um, in their twenties or thirties with their first home, um, is going to be looking for something different. And then on the flip side, as I think of aging in place, um, you know, I'm thinking in terms of my parents, they've looked multiple times in moving here. They, they don't live in Groseal currently. Um, and it's really tough to find a one level, something that's, you know, comparable, um, that they would still feel is comparable to the home that they have now. And, um, and being accessible to them. If they can't drive or be transported readily, I think, John, maybe you mentioned like, or maybe it was you that mentioned, you know, even offering the, like the shuttles and more senior options. That all becomes an expense then for them, right? Because we don't offer those services, so then they have to factor that in. So I think if it, you know, a lot broader terms than just the list price of the house or the property taxes, I think there's a lot of additional cost, um, to living here. And if we live here for 40, 50 years, we all are aware of it and we're used to it. Um, but it becomes less and less affordable on a fixed income at that, at that end, so.
Additional thoughts?
You've got the right picture up here for this, right? I mean Hawthorne's probably one of the more desirable places for, you know, aging people to go to. It's always full, you know, there's, whenever a unit comes up, it's gone. And, you know, the, the first question is, is where does something else like that go? You, you know, you guys were hitting it pretty hard with Water's Edge or, or, you know, where does this type of a, of a development go? Uh, it does not go in infield, infill residential, which is what most of the island is. But the reality is, is we need more families and we need some more spaces for people to age on the island. So, yeah, this is the big quandary we have is where does something like this go? And is this compatible? You know, we're talking about both ends of the spectrum, right? The young families and the old families. And it's not necessarily the same housing complex or, or area, right? So these are all good questions and I, I think it's going to take a little while to just even try and answer them.
I, I think what's, um, it, it, I think Angela touched on a lot of it. I mean, it is a, um, it's not convenient to get to. Uh, it's, um, but it's extremely safe and it's very community oriented. And, um, you know, I think more so than, you know, there are others who would argue with us, but we happen to think that we have a very, uh, kind of community oriented mentality around here. And so, um, you know, I think it does take a bit of a, um, you, you have to pay a premium to live here, right? And, and, and for the reasons that she mentioned. And it's kind of, it's almost self-selecting in the sense of the people that live here are willing to pay that premium. Now, I don't know how big that premium is, I don't know how big that premium should be. But, um, you, you know, if, if the, you know, if, if people are faced with the option, they can live in community X or they can live in Groseal, uh, generally it's going to cost more. And part of the reason for that is because it's a more desirable place than place X in many cases. And so, um, otherwise the prices would be the same, right? It's not like we, it's not like we have an extra tax that we have on people that say, okay, because we, we want to make it more expensive here, we're going to charge you 10% more, uh, to buy the house here. Uh, it's more expensive because it's more in demand. People want to live here instead of place X, wherever that is. Now, that isn't true against every neighborhood in the world, but it happens to be true against most of the downriver neighborhoods, as you suggested. Um, and it's not to say that there aren't great places to live in other downriver communities and elsewhere. It's just Groseal is, is, um, you know, has that character to it that people are willing to pay for. And therefore their housing sellers are willing to demand that extra, extra amount. So it, it is, but, but how do we get that lined up? That's really the piece, right? If we end up pricing out the people that, you know, want to be here, not because the houses have a 10% premium on it, but because the housing mix doesn't fit the, the, the people that want to live here, that's really where I think we need to reorder things. And, and as Eric was saying, you know, the Hawthorne Glen model is something that's in high demand right now. And so do we have other areas that, you know, are maybe more expensive to build, but aren't as much in demand because there isn't as many, there aren't as many people looking for a 12,000 square foot house as there are people looking for a 1,800 square foot ranch condo? And so if, you know, the more we can cater things towards what is really in demand, I think would be helpful. Even if it does have that premium on it, it's going to match the, the needs that people have.
I always hear a lot of talk about higher density in order to have places for, for, or for older community to move to. Uh, but one thing I don't ever hear is what about for our younger community? People coming, our kids coming right out of high school or college? You know, there's that many people, that age group buying houses on Groseal. And I think if we have more hi- higher density, like apartment building, areas where you can build apartments, which is very, very limited in the island, I think that would help with our future generations on the island here. Uh, because I, I think it'd be nice to think about our, our kids in the future as opposed to just our aging community.
Great point.
I mean, you named the challenges really well of both downsizing and, and buying new homes. Again, I think if we can show folks that there's a way to, instead of buying a new home, spend another hundred, $200,000 to either, in addition to your home or something like that. I think, I think that's a possible solution, not necessarily, there's no silver bullet here, there's nothing we're going to do. But if we unleash everyone's ability to invest in their own properties and either bring their kids back into that little accessory dwelling unit or, uh, have themselves downsize themselves in that, I think that's a real possibility to go forward. I'll throw out one more new idea, uh, just to, because I know the last master plan, I, I like this, but I, I just think it's important to ask about it. Really kind of enforce the idea of like being able to drive around Groseal and have that kind of water sightline. So it discouraged a lot of waterfront development. Um, and I wonder if it's worth considering that or asking questions about that because there are some older, older, um, like boathouse type things or water type houses that were before the last, uh, zoning stuff happened. Um, some people like them, some people don't, but I'd just be curious if that, if like water builds were something that folks were, were interested in as well, you know?
Well, one of the things to keep in mind also about, uh, things like condominiums, not all condominiums look like, uh, like this. I mean, I, I live at, uh, Park Lane Villas, which are two-story structures, you know, 10 buildings, each with, uh, you know, six or eight individual units in it. And the, uh, the colonists that lived there, the residents that lived there are, I would say 85% senior citizens, okay? Uh, there are a few families, limited number, that have small children. And it's, it's difficult, that, it, it's a difficult environment for a family with young children to live in, in, in that kind of condominium. There's no place to play. You know, there's no backyard with a fence around it. You know, there, the children have to play in the, in the parking lot. It's, 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 you know, it's, it's, so the fact that it's a condominium, you know, may in fact, and does suit senior citizens, but it's a bit of a stretch for, uh, for really young families. That's just my observation.
Be nice for there to be a playground, right? If you could get it so that they had a, often we would require that in new condo or apartment dwellings is, um, having place space. Because there's a real benefit socially for seniors and families to be mixed, not segregated in their respective areas. And so there's, there are benefits to that if it is planned a little better, yeah.
Like in the case of, uh, of our, our buildings, you know, the, the people that, the eight units that are in the building, they're a neighborhood. You know, they know each other, they see each other all the time, you know, they help each other with groceries.
Right, yep.
You know, it's a community.
Yep. So I'm going to turn over to Catherine to talk us through the next couple of topics. Um, they, these are the biggest, the biggest ones for sure. Um, but you want to?
Okay, we need the microphone over here, we can't hear you.
There we go. Yeah, just real quick check in, are we good to keep going or does anybody want to take a quick five-minute breather?
I'm good.
Uh, are we good? Let's keep going.
All right, and so the next big kind of media topic that we noticed, especially people mentioning when it comes to engagement, was connectivity and mobility, which is kind of no surprise when you're an island community. Um, the bridge was mentioned quite a bit, I think, well, across our surveys, across conversations in general. Um, when it comes to both the Free Bridge as well as the Toll Bridge, the Free Bridge was mentioned, I think, almost what, one and two comments when it came to strengths and challenges? Um, and then the Toll Bridge was mentioned quite a bit as well. Um, but we also saw quite a few comments when it comes to the trails being a huge asset, when it comes to being able to access very specific resources, especially McComb Street and schools, where ones that were mentioned quite a bit as well as parks. Um, so when we're talking about connectivity, we're also thinking about what are those key destinations that people are wanting to get to from their homes? And which ones would require, uh, people having car optional modes? So not necessarily needing to be able to drive to your nearest open space, but what are the places that people want to have that bikeable option or that walkable option? And how do we find the best places to be able to build that within the given right of way? Um, as well as considering, how do you build in those partnerships when it comes to those streets that are not necessarily owned or maintained by the township? Uh, because you do have quite a few that are managed by the county as well as those that are private roads. Um, so we're considering kind of all of those major factors, but we also have certain ones that we wanted to think about. Um, when it comes to kind of the, the larger thoughts, when it comes to wayfinding, when it comes to signage areas where we thought we could really make some major moves. And so that's where our questions kind of lead us to. So one of the major thoughts that we wanted to chat about was when it comes to the bridges, what is the latest status? What are those major conversations? What are things that you all are wanting for us to be able to chat about more? Either when it comes to sharing and educating or when it comes to talking about the opportunities, the connections via things such as the Earn Bell Trail connecting across the Free Bridge and how that might impact, um, the, the destinations and the, the traveling that way? To also chat about what gateways you all think should be prioritized, right? Is that four corners? Is that where you all turn from Meridian into Groseal Parkway? Are we thinking about the bridges? Are there other major gateways that we should be considering? Um, what are those key destinations? And then also thinking about some of these other, uh, recommendations that were mentioned in some of these prior plans. So, such as improvements to Meridian, to Groseal Parkway, thinking about the, the East, uh, West River as a loop with these great sightlines that I think Kyle had mentioned when it comes to the waterfront. Um, how are we leveraging those? And what are some of those conversations that have come up in the past? So with that, John, do you want to open up the floor?
Okay, well, I'll tell you what, I think, uh, the right person to ask is down at the end of the table. Kyle, the status on the Toll Bridge?
Sure, and I think, I don't know if Derek's still here, but, um.
Oh, he left.
Just, just left. He's even better than I am. Um, I believe at our next township, uh, board meeting, we will be officially signing, uh, a contract with an engineering company to look at outstanding engineering, uh, questions at the bridge. And when that engineering contract is done, we'll have all the information we need to, to figure out if we're able to move forward or not on the Toll Bridge. Um, and I know the hope is to get a decision by, or at least, uh, something public for the, for folks to look at by November of this year on the Toll Bridge. Um, on the Free Bridge, I will say, um, last year, uh, Wayne County had promised a public hearing on the Free Bridge and we did not get one. And, uh, I, I know I'm unhappy with that as are other board members. And I know just as a board member, I, I want to know as much about the Free Bridge as I possibly can before I make a decision on the Toll Bridge. So that's something I'm going to be pushing Wayne County pretty hard, hard on. And I honestly invite the public to push Wayne County pretty hard on because I want to know about the status of the Free Bridge, what's going on there, uh, when investments are going to be made. Because I mean, and I can go back into the history of it if folks want, but, uh, very clearly, uh, more repairs need to be made to extend the life of that bridge. And eventually, hopefully 20, 30 years down the line, it looks like we might need a new bridge there. So that's something I'm considering and looking at as I'm, as I'm making decisions there. So I know there's no members of the public here, but if I can, I was talking with, uh, Mr. Boggs here a little earlier. He asked questions, I can, uh, answer questions for the, for anyone else that has any, but that's pretty much the update.
Kyle, uh, just, has, has the board conceptually, if the ownership, hypothetically, if the ownership changed, would, would, what would the citizens see in a way of difference? Would it still be a toll bridge? Would it be a free bridge? Would it be cheaper? Would it be more expensive? I mean, do you have any feel for that?
Yeah, yeah, no, it's a great question. Um, uh, at least the way that I understand it's been looking, and I should be very clear. I did sign a non-disclosure agreement, so that has to do with the finances of the, of the bridge. I can't, uh, talk about that, you know? Um, but, but overall, I know the way that it's being looked at is to continue it on as a toll bridge, to be able to continue to fund it as a toll bridge without hopefully going out to the taxpayers for more money. That's the way we're looking at it. Um, so the idea would be to continue to, to, to make it go on as, as an existing, as it exists now, basically, is the hope, yeah.
Okay. All right, questions on that? All right, uh, I'll square on that one. Let's talk about, uh, uh, your last point, the East West River Roads, you know, as, as being key loops around the island. And it's a shame Brian's not here because Brian has worked on, uh, the bike paths, uh, you know, in, or tried to in those areas. And ran into difficulties because being very old roads, the right of way is very narrow. To the extent that, that I, I believe, uh, East River Road, actually, they, they got, they started up with a plan and, and basically had to shut it down. Because there just, there just isn't room. I mean, there's even, as I remember, you know, on West River, there's even the dispute about, you know, where the fire plugs are located relative to being on the property or being on the roadway and right of way. Uh, because it's just so darn narrow. And, and, and this I absolutely have to share, you know, I, I ride my bicycle a lot on East River and West River. And the traffic just zips by there. Uh, and it, it is so close, you know, you want to stay on the driveway or on the roadway, but, you know, it's, it's scary at times. And so, you know, I don't know what, what, how, how you would ever possibly get around something like that. Um, and I'm sure if, if it were possible, Brian would have thought about it because he's, he's all on top of that. But, uh, you know, I, I would not encourage, you know, any more, any more activity in that area from a safety standpoint.
Is an easement off the table, like any appetite for people to?
When we think of those very large front.
It's been very negatively viewed in the past because we did try and put it up. Excuse me, we did try and put a bike path on, on East River, uh, and would require some easements. And that was, uh, that was a no-go. And West River is actually even narrower, particularly in, in a couple of different areas. It's already, the road's already on people's properties. But when you say multimodal, what do you mean by that?
Part of that is thinking about the ability for people to use both their bikes as well as, um, being able to walk, so having those pedestrian connections. There is also potential for things such as scooters. Sometimes we'll think about things such as carpool or, uh, shared, uh, car lanes, which are especially interesting when you think about places like, uh, McComb Street. So areas where you have restaurants is where we'll sometimes see some of those more shared areas when it comes to services and, uh, car uses such as that, which will help consolidate some of that use and some of that traffic backup that you'll see, especially when you have those, uh, one lanes in either direction, being able to keep people out of the way of traffic. Um, so that way people, cars can keep moving, but that way you also have those safer connections for people to be able to walk or bike or have some of those other connections. So thinking about where it makes sense to really congregate those, uh, optional uses versus other areas that where it really isn't possible just because of the right of way itself.
Yeah, unfortunately, I mean, in, in about 2010 was the last time a bike path was installed outside of this wa, path over here. And that was on, uh, it ended up going on, on Horse Mill. And there was a, a large study. And that was on, uh, it ended up going on, on Horse Mill, and there was a, a large study, engineering firm study, people contacted for easements. And, uh, East River wasn't, was not possible, at, at least at that point in time. So I would expect that that would be very similar to now, but, you know, you're talking down the, down the road, how does that work? I don't know. Could you plan for it? Maybe, but you're also planning in people's private properties today.
Was it not possible because people weren't willing to?
Yeah, A, not willing, and B, you're too, you had, we'd have had to build a, like a bridge in some cases, would have had been on the water side and there's not enough, there's not enough land between the current road and the wa, and the, uh, waterway.
The only thing I can think of for East and West River, it goes against current design concepts, but, um, possibly like asking Wayne County to go down to like a one-way type road? And maybe having a separated bike path or, or walking path? The reason that's not generally suggested is actually makes people go, one ways tend to make cars go even faster than they already do on West and East River. So if we were to do that, I would, really would want a separation between the walking and biking. There would be some uproar about it, I'm sure, because it adds minutes to people's commutes and things like that. But, uh, that's the best thing I can think of to, to increase accessibility and walkability and likability on East and West River.
I've, um, actually seen some, uh, bicycling maps for real dedicated bicyclers where, maps where they show East River is, is a, is a route. And I guess if you're a bicyclist, that's bicy, that's going thirty miles per hour, you'd probably be fine. But for most bicyclers, they're not going that fast, and I think it's almost dangerous for most typical bicyclers.
Yeah, I think what, when we think about the continuum of bike riders, right? We have the, the strong and fearless bike riders, uh, which are people who would feel comfortable on areas such as East and West River versus your people such as myself. I will personally put myself inside this category, which is the occasional rider. So we're very used to being able to do those protected bike areas, which you guys have quite a few, such as the one going, um, up and down Meridian. Um, so you do have some of those really, really strong infrastructure points, and being able to just kind of connect those to other areas is key as well.
Would it be an option, and this is, I know this might be thinking a little bit out of pocket, but I know like on Macomb Street or in the business districts where they will, like communities will do certain things to slow people down. So, you know, painting on the roadway, so it's like where a crosswalk is, so that their eyes are drawn to that and then they slow down. As opposed to just like a stopper, a slow sign. I don't know if that's an option for East and West River, but I think, you know, everything everyone said makes sense. When I think about East River and West River and the narrowness and property owners and things like that. But the fact is, we have a lot of bike riders, and there are a lot of very novice bike riders who are still out. And they're, they're going to connect and they're going to be on the road. So I guess if, if there's some creative way that we can make it more, like feel more accessible and safer, um, that might, you know, and, and interesting, then that might be, I, I think something that people would entertain more so than, um, and it's not as permanent of a change, I guess, but it, you know, thinking in terms of just making it more accessible would be good. And safer. I know my, my kids ride, I ride, and it's, you know, not, everyone's not always paying attention. Um, so I don't know if there's a way that we can get creative with that.
You'd have mentioned something that, um, was really key there too, which is the idea of those areas where people are crossing, right? Are those kind of natural slowing points for people? Are there areas when it comes to, and this could be anywhere, but I'm specifically personally thinking of East and West River, where those crossings really count? Like, I remember when we were on our mobile tours, when we were crossing Macomb Street just to go over to the Observation Deck, right?
Yep.
I mean, cars still zoom right on by there, and that's a really key intersection for people to be able to turn. So are there certain areas such as that where you notice people trying to cross that maybe are just a little bit more difficult?
Yeah, I would say that specifically, Sunrise Park, um, over by Water's Edge, going from the, the, you know, golf course or the building over to the boat area. Um, I think from, um, is it Hickory Drive? That's over, that, to, to get over to, like across Meridian to Macomb, and, um, that's a pretty well-traveled area. And it's really not safe, but lots and lots of kids and families cross there. So it's like Hickory, I think it's Hickory Drive is the outlet, across from the police station, basically. Um, those would be the ones I would think of off the top of my head.
I mean, the, the biggest obstacle is the county, these are all county-owned roads, and so even just a crosswalk is a big difficult thing to get, get approved and move forward. Um, but yeah, I mean, I support doing what we can on that, yeah.
Bellevue, uh, Bellevue and, uh, and West River, like you say, that, that is a particularly bad one. Uh, because, uh, West River has, has a blind spot. They're, they're coming down a hill when they're, when they're heading north. And, and it's, uh, it's very dangerous for biking and for walking.
That's another good one.
And I'll just say, if you all do have recommendations on those roads, that's something we can take to the county and be like, hey, let's, can you help us with this? So I would, I would encourage you all to, to do that.
Well, how about we talk about Four Corners? Meridian and Groseo Parkway.
Traffic circle?
That was in the prior plan.
I'm putting on Groseo now, that's it.
Yeah, what, what about that? Uh, I, I know that, uh, uh, so, well, a decade or two ago, there was discussion about, uh, people wanted to put, uh, there was a proposal to put a big sign, a big billboard up. So that rather than having, uh, all the little signs that people put up about, you know, uh, Groseo here or something else there. Uh, you know, they would put it on this, so it wouldn't look quite so, uh, yeah, whatever, I don't know what the right word is. Uh, it never came to fruition in part because of, uh, Wayne County, the safety standards, you have to have their things back. And the, and the, the sign had to be back so far from the roadway, you couldn't see it anyway. And so, uh, that, that idea was dropped. You know, right now, we've got, we've got the Garden Club there, which makes, you know, two of the Four Corners, actually three of the Four Corners look very nice. And I don't, uh, from my perspective, I, I think it, it looks just fine. I think they do a great job. Was there something else in the plan, uh, that, that they mentioned?
The prior plan had mentioned, actually, a, a roundabout was one of the recommendations at that area, which we were wondering. But also, we've noticed in terms of traffic patterns, right? I mean, it being a key intersection naturally, that's going to be where you see a, a crossover when it comes to accidents. Um, so that is kind of one of the fewer hotspots, I guess, that would appear, um, when we're looking at some of those traffic patterns that we see that SMCAC has collected. And so just wondering in terms of anecdotally as well, just what is that sense of arrival that you all have when it comes to approaching that, that intersection? Because it is a really key entrance to the area. And does it feel welcoming? Does it feel like you have a natural sense of direction when you have people who are visiting? Do they have a, a natural sense of where to go, especially when it comes to getting them to Macomb Street and to your kind of central business district? So that was kind of something else that we're thinking of too, is in terms of arts and culture and the, the sense of welcoming. Is that area succeeding in its mission there?
What do you all think about that? Dan?
I think some signage indicating that you're on Groseo, and also that, that the, the Macomb District is to the left. They're, they're really, the Garden Club does do a great job far as, far as the planting is there, but there, there is no signage there whatsoever, y, you know, um, other than the fact that you've gone across a bridge, there's nothing saying that you're on Groseo. And I think it'd be nice to have something welcoming, welcoming to, to, to the island.
Well, there is, there is a sign farther back.
There, there is, I'll, I'll have to look, I'll have to look closer, is there a sign way back there?
Yeah, back, where you come across the bridge, it's on the right-hand side, is before you get to, uh,
Before the Four Corners.
The Groseo Country Club, it's on the right.
Oh, the one, yeah, way, yeah.
But you know, your point about the fact.
You're moving thirty miles, you're moving thirty-five miles per hour, as opposed to you're a complete stop. And, and, you know, many cities have signs welcoming them in, you know, and I think it'd be nice for Groseo to have something to welcome you to the island.
Well, you know, that, you raise a very good point too. I mean, I had a, a friend who lives off-island that needed to find Township Hall. Okay? And I had, I had to, you know, navigate him there, he had no idea, and there isn't any way, if he, if he just came up Groseo Parkway, that he would know, turn right, go to the end and turn right again. I mean, there's not, there's nothing to, to direct him.
Yeah, it'd be nice to point out a few of the major features of the islands, you know, just real quick, I, I don't want anyone to spend time reading there and affecting the safety, but a few of the, a few of the important features in the island have some arrows up there.
Uh, that, that could be, uh, that could be a definite addition. What?
Yeah, I, I agree. No, I think, I mean, I do, I think the, I think the, um, Beautification Committee and the Garden Club, I think they do a nice job. And it's well-maintained, and it's pretty, and it looks, it looks nice. Um, but there isn't that sense of like, you know, you're here, welcome, and this is this direction, and this is that direction. Or even just kind of that gateway feeling, there's, you know, there's not that there. I feel the same about Macomb as well, but that's, yeah, I think we could definitely do something there.
Yeah, I, I'll say it again, um, you know, I, I say it somewhat jokingly because I know it's not a very popular idea. But a traffic circle with something in the middle, with like a lighthouse in the middle and decoration and all that stuff, flowers all around there, I think would be a pretty, um, welcoming, and, and it would keep the traffic moving and all that. But I also understand there are a lot of people who think it's the worst idea in the world, so I'm not, I'm not dying on that hill.
It's change. It's change, but we have a lot of safety and it, it, there are a lot, there's a lot of backup for why it makes a ton of sense there.
Yeah, I, yeah.
I think people are usually nervous because they don't know what to do with them, but they're a lot more in than they were five, ten years ago, and people are getting used to them in twenty years. I mean, it's been, it, there's tons in the greater metropolitan area, so I'm willing to fight for it if anyone is.
I might get on that hill with you. Um, I think too, the safety again of like pedestrians, because the crosswalk on, what is that? I guess the east side works fine, but if you want to cross this way, it's like Frogger. It's, it's not a great situation, and I've, you know, I've, I've done it plenty of times before, but that's another nerve-wracking area to cross on your bike or you're, or walking. Um, on the west side, I guess, of, of Meridian, right?
Which is where?
Yeah, so if, so.
Right across from where the?
When you're approaching, yeah. And there's a residence here, uh, residential, you know, housing here, and I guess that's the country club property that is right there. And then, um, you know, just trying to come across that way, or head to the bridge if we wanted to connect to the Ironbell Trail or anything like that, or go off the bridge. Um, yeah.
Or, or cross the recreation area.
Or cross the recreation area, yeah.
We'll be having a roundtable as well, so it'll be open to the public, but we're specifically inviting the Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee. We're inviting the Island Beautification Committee, the Arts and Culture Commission, Committee, Advisory Committee.
Committee about, uh, it's inactive though, right?
Club.
So I, I think the Senior Arts Alliance, we're looking at.
Yes, thank you. Um, so we are inviting them all to that conversation, and we'll be posing some similar questions. Are there other major questions that we should be posing to them as well when we're having that conversation?
Well, before we get to more questions, I think we got, need to also think about the fact that if we're putting up signs at the Free Bridge, we should also put signs up at the Toll Bridge.
Mm-hmm.
Cause even then, you're, you're even farther away from, from the center of town.
Yeah.
So, you know, both, both areas.
We've noticed the township does own a little sliver of land, right? Right by that, uh, exit as well, which will be nice to, it gives you a little bit of freedom to be able to play with what that looks like to.
You're suggesting a roundabout there as well?
Jay, that's your call, right there. Come on, Jay, stand up for it. I mean, Jay's not standing up for it.
I'll say, it's, I mean, it's, it's a huge asset that we, I know everyone has to come on and off in those two points, so it's like a huge place where we could advertise things. I'll also say, the Garden Club, I know, is unhappy sometimes at all the sign, like the signs that people put up in front of the hard work that they do. So having like a, a place or a sign or something that would more, be, be more respectful of the work they do would be good. I'll just finally say, I think you know this, but the history, I mean, uh, Mr. Schreikard referred to it as Four Corners. It used to be a gathering place, it used to be like a gas station, et cetera, there. Um, a, a place that looked, people looked on fondly, so I'm not, I don't know, that's probably not possible at this point there. But, um, you know, there's a history of, of, of there being more than, than just an intersection. Yeah.
You know, there was another, an idea that was, was kicked around at the, at the end of Macomb Street, where, where it comes into Meridian, on the property across the way. Uh, to have a, have some sort of signage at that location. And I don't remember exactly what, why that died, but, uh, that was to be, that was an alternative to Four Corners.
It, that was thought of as an alternative because the, it was so far back at Four Corners because of the county?
Yeah.
That it could be a better presentation at the foot of Macomb Street?
And there were just, there was, uh, another element to it, and that was, uh, you know, if they made an electronic sign, okay? What happens is, is that you get the same sort of thing that happens when you look at the, the cable television, where everybody has a right to put whatever, you know, whatever is up there, and you end up having twenty-six or thirty or forty things going. And, and so in the end, for somebody, unless they're going to sit there at the traffic light for, uh, for ten minutes, aren't going to see it. So it, nothing, it wasn't, nothing was practical. Okay, what else have we got here? We've talked about key destinations, we've talked about gateways, uh, the bridge status. Uh, I think that's about it on this one.
Well, I, I think from, I mean, from a key destination standpoint, right? So you've got, I mean, you've got the nature center, you've got key destinations all over the island, really. And at one point in time, the bike path was trying to link them all together, and I think now it's finally, it's done a pretty good job of you can actually continuously go now, either on a bike path or now this gravel path, and hit everything from the south end to the, to the north end.
That nature area is, is a hidden asset on Groseo. You know, I've taken people back, you know, in there, and they have no idea how beautiful that place is back in there.
What about Gibraltar Bay?
That's a very good point. Gibraltar, uh, Gibraltar Bay area.
The only.
That is a, that is a hidden treasure.
It really is. We were, I was just talking to my husband about that yesterday, because it's, yeah, it's so nice back there. The only other thing I would suggest, like with connectivity is, um, and we mentioned this earlier, is, um, by boat. So we have all the, you know, canals, most of the land is privately owned, but if there were a way that we could make it avail, more available to come by boat wherever on the island, um, it, there, that would be, I think, a huge asset that we don't have right now.
There's a very short section at Water's Edge.
Right.
But if that was, if that was longer and, and easier to use, and if you had great food up at, uh, hopefully Tipsy Fish will have great food there. And maybe that can be utilized more as a.
Yeah.
Transient docking there.
Yeah, okay.
Do the yacht clubs have transit docking?
They do for club, for club members, so you have to be within the, I think, AYC or whatever the, yeah.
American Yacht Club.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then you go, so visitors can, yeah.
Right. Yeah, it's, it's a, it's an excellent point. I mean, uh, I, boaters are always looking for someplace to go on their boats, to go for dinner, if we go for drinks, to, you know, uh, just someplace to have an excuse to be out there, other than just sitting and floating, so. Which we do a pretty good job of. But, um, yeah, I mean, if, if there are a way to incorporate that, especially, I mean, it's been discussed in the past, and I don't know how it could be done, but at the foot of Macomb Street. And then, you know, people coming off and walking onto Macomb Street to access businesses there. There's nothing really that, that you would want to access, you know, unless you're looking to go to the bakery or something.
It'd be interesting to look at what it would take to, uh, to get something like the Diamond Jack, which is something that takes off of both Wind Out Detroit, um, at Water's Edge Marina. Um, just as a, I'm not saying all the time, they do that all the time at Wind Out Detroit, but maybe like once a year, twice a year, having them do a, an event from here, take off from here, or something like that.
Great point, and if we're ready to move on to the next section, that's actually a really nice segue to our next section, which we're, we're wanting to talk about open spaces and waterfronts. So let's talk more all about waterfront connections. Um, when it comes to the waterfront, especially one of the major things that we heard about was public access to the waterfront. That's something that we're wanting to dive deeper in as well when it comes to this next phase. Um, naturally, the connection to the outdoors, your open spaces in general were a source of pride that we heard about numerous times. Pretty much across the board, all of them were mentioned multiple times, which is pretty rare. Usually there will be one or two kind of crown jewels. People are proud across the board, doesn't matter how small the neighborhood park is, people have mentioned it. Um, but it comes down to, uh, that we heard quite a bit about was the idea of everybody being able to access these spaces. So there was quite a few mentions of, I love to go to this space, but I can't take my children there. I love to go to this space, but it's really hard now that my parents are older for them to be able to access it. So ADA access was something that was mentioned, this was addressed in your Parks and Rec Plan as well. Um, as something that could be an area of improvement and opportunity in the future. But also the idea of spaces for youth to be able to play, for them to be able to easily access. There were multiple mentions of the prior play, play space that was on Macomb Street, which we had talked about during our mobile tours. Um, and questions about the future of that, kind of the future of what are play spaces for children nowadays. Um, also thinking about the closing of Meridian, what does that look like for children on the south, southern end of the island? Where are they going to be able to go, um, especially for after-school hours? So that was something that we have heard quite a bit. Um, but also thinking about what are those public access points when it comes to the waterfront? And how are we considering some of those, whether that be for observation, for kind of that more passive enjoyment of the water, or for active connection points as well? And so with that, the major questions that we were wanting to chat with you all was, first off, starting with your, your open space policies. When we're thinking about what becomes open space, how those areas are integrated within your current network? How do we intentionally think about the criteria for what will be used for conservation when it comes to open space? What will be used for recreation or for some of those more active forms of connecting with nature? For your trails, for your other systems? And then what could potentially instead be thought of as development with some sort of a green component to it? We also wanted to talk about which public open spaces should be more publicly accessible when we're thinking about prioritization. It's really hard, we know, to make all of these green spaces ADA accessible, especially when we're talking about the waterfront and being able to overcome steep slopes. So what are those major areas that we should be focusing on first? And thinking about when it comes to leveraging things like MDNR funds and being able to talk with the Department of Natural Resources and other sources. We also want to talk all about what recreational offerings people are going off island for. When we're talking all about Water's Edge, this was something that we had mentioned kind of earlier tonight. But thinking about what could be brought in there or in other spaces that might be able to make those have a better use of those existing spaces that people know and go to already for recreation? And, and when it comes to Water's Edge, what does that, that look like specifically there? So with that, John, do you want to take us away?
Okay, well, let's, let's take the first one first. What do you think about the criteria for intentional conservation? As opposed to uses for recreation or development? Okay, in, in this discussion, are you, okay, we're not currently, we currently do not have open space millage money for the purposes of new property. We have money for the purposes of maintenance of that property. Okay, and, and that property is locked in by, by deed restriction and, and would require a vote of the public to, to change. Is this correct, is this question directed at reversing open space? Or what, what is it specifically directed at? If we're not buying, why do we need criteria?
It's, is that an, something that you all would be open to? Is seeing some open spaces no longer become open spaces? Are we wanting to really preserve those open spaces and maintain them? And if so, how are we determining when we are partnering with other institutions as well? Such as how, when are we partnering with the Nature Land Conservancy? When are we maintaining it solely within the township? Kind of those, I think, are where we're mostly wanting to focus.
Okay, thoughts?
I'll attend to what you said though, John. The, the maintenance funds are, there's no maintenance millage right now, so they will run out soon, I think. I'm just so focused now.
I just want to say, I, I think all three are very, very, very important. You know, where our, our natural, natural areas are, recreation and development, they're, they're very important. But I think they, they already have it areas and I think all of the, all of them can be improved to a certain extent, but I wouldn't want to take away from any of, any of them. I think we should just look at improving those spaces. We, we have those spaces, you know, can we make them better?
Well, for example, you know, the, the open spaces just off of Meridian opposite the airport, okay? They put in a beautiful trail that goes back in there with wood chips. There's a big sign there, you know, it's, it's directional, it's, 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 it makes, it makes access to those woods viable. You don't have to go explore. You know, that, that's a good example of, of making good use of that property. Now, you can't build on it, but you can certainly, you know, make it accessible that way.
Yeah, that's what I thought of as the, it, it, that sort of a use is both conservation and recreation. It's not development, but it is, you know, we have this same thing, I live near the Ferry Trail, that's now, you know, reopened, refigured and reopened. And it's a fantastic asset for every, you know, I see people constantly coming through there, going in from either side, coming, you know, passing through or just going through one end, coming out the other. I think the, the one off Meridian, by Meridian School is great. I mean, I think those are, you know, more of that, I think, would be great. That, that obviously doesn't address the ADA compliant piece of it. Certainly could be, you know, a small portion of it, you know, could be asphalted in, you know, a quarter mile or something like that to give some ability to get back into the woods. But probably extremely cost prohibitive to do that more than a, on a limited basis.
I just wanted to quickly add to the Ferry Trail. That's one example where people have, have volunteered their private property in order to create that trail. It wouldn't, wouldn't have been possible without people allowing the township to use their property.
Yeah, so, you know, I don't know how, whether the average citizen even knows that those trails are there. You know, that's another thing. How, how do we communicate that this recreational asset is in fact available? Okay? You know, we don't direct signs to it, we don't, you know, there's, there's things that we could look at to improve it since we've got the asset. You know, find ways to, to let people know that it's there. They want to take a walk on a Saturday afternoon, hey, there's a great spot for you. You know, something like that.
Yeah, just, I was going to suggest something similar, but like if, when, I think, when you just said it's, you know, that kind of is still recreation, we don't have programming associated with it. And so maybe that's what, you know, something that we could do more with and let, let people know. The other thing, and I'm thinking this, I don't think this fits into ADA accessible, but I am thinking of strollers, moms and strollers. I mean, they're pretty limited to use of those trails and thinking, if we're thinking about, you know, attracting more young families, if there's something that we could do with some of those properties or one of them in particular to make it more accessible for, you know, families with small children. And it doesn't have to just be strollers, but even thinking about their little bikes and, you know, just things like that where it's just more family oriented. Maybe one of the trails in particular.
Absolutely. And when it gets to that whole full continuum, right? So we're also thinking about if it's ADA compliant, if it works for people with strollers, that also means that it works better for seniors, for those who have assisted mobility devices. So it's kind of a, a good well-rounded measure of can everybody access this space?
You know, there, there is an opportunity for another trail which would link to Macomb. Most people don't know this, but, but on the south side of, of Macomb Street, behind, behind where the post office is at, there is, there is a trail back in there, a natural trail. And many, many, 30 years ago, there was talk about turning that into a, into exactly what we got in the way with, with the shave, with the wood chips and all of this and labeling it. It was, it was going to be, it, it was another enhancement for Macomb Street. And so, you know, that is one of those where, where maybe, you know, it's not too long and it could be part, maybe paved, you know, for the ADA compliance, that would be a nice addition.
Yeah, that's a great one.
I think at one point that was, it was completed with wood chips as a Eagle Scout.
It was? Oh, I didn't know that.
Back near, going by, by the old Playscape?
Yeah, Playscape.
Yeah, there was a loop back through there that-
I'll be darned.
Yeah, I don't know if it's still accessible.
And it runs the whole road, right? Or am I making that up in my mind? It, it runs the whole way of the, the island, right? So it connects from one through to the output. It goes from Meridian all the way over to East River?
Oh, the one, the, the Meridian one.
The one that's just over here.
Yes, yes, that one does, yes. This other, where Chairman Schreikert's talking is from, is connecting from Macomb to, I guess that's-
Parkway.
Parkway, right? Yeah, so it would just be, it would just be like another pathway.
Oh, yeah, through the open space, yeah.
Yeah.
I'll just say quick, I think folks know this, but just to talk a little bit about the history of it. So open space was set aside and over time, those trails have been made and I think have allowed folks to enjoy them a little bit better. The biggest challenge I see with accessing some of them is, it's really informal. I mean, mostly folks get there by biking or walking, which I think is good to encourage that. But in terms of ADA accessibility or even just parking, like there isn't any really. And I think that's intentional. A lot of the folks, a lot of the few spots to park to enjoy these trails are kind of informal and allowed where like one or two parking, one or two cars can park maybe or something like that. I think that's good for now, but I do want to think about ways to, not necessarily create more parking, I don't think that's what we should be doing, but find ways to have more like ticketed parking spots. So like the, the place that I would suggest actually starting with is Sunrise Park. Right now, there's a deal with the township and the Historical Society that gives access to the Historical Society parking lot. It's free right now. The township covers liability on it, people park there, go to Sunrise Park, kayak. Winter long, people were doing like dipping in the water there, which I don't know about that. But just having like, like at Luna Pier, you go and you just, you, you, you have like a little machine, you put a little ticket on your, on your car and say, hey, you can be here for so many hours or whatever. And so that's the sort of thing that I want to maybe figure out how to start and get people used to, to both attract usage and, and, and show that, like, yeah, parking is something that we need to be thinking about and, and, and not take up time with. So that's one, one thing I wanted to say. And there's also like a really, thinking about trails or things, access to the water, there's a place called the Wildlife Sanctuary, which is, it's, it's kind of along Thero Fair Canal. It's open space right there. And even like, I think the kayak launch was proposed there at one point and was kind of pushed against, but even just trails along the water there, finding better ways to give folks access there would be really, really, I think, positive.
Okay. What recreational offers, offerings do people go to off island for and why?
Um, fishing.
Boat, boat launches.
Fishing and boat launches, yeah.
I was going to say the-
Boat launch.
Ramp.
Boat ramp. Indoor swimming.
Yes, that was the-
That's a big one.
That's a big one.
Off island, we don't have a pool. I think the hockey team plays over at Trenton. We don't have a hockey rink.
And we have a tough time with courts, which I, just basketball, volleyball, indoor, winter, you know, additional extracurriculars. You know, the Recreation Department does a good job collaborating with the school on spaces, but it's tough. It helped to, we, like, a lot of the pickleball teams were in the schools and now they're over in the tennis center. But that, I think courts are of concern. And I know that was something I brought up when I sat on the School Strategy Committee, because if we're decreasing the number of buildings, that's going to continue to be a problem, so.
Do we have any kind of winter recreation other than tennis, other than tennis center?
Really, it's all just gyra, youth teams, so it's sixth grade and under. Other than the occasional, like, I think there's a group of 30 somethings that have a weekly basketball game and they, you know, rent the court space and, you know, things like that.
Yeah, it's run by the athletic boosters.
Yeah, oh, okay, yeah.
Well, there is a sled hill.
Wednesday night.
With snow.
That is winter, that is recreation.
But no, we don't, as far as I know, we don't, there, there isn't much in the winter.
There's really not, yeah. I spend a lot of time in my car going off island during the winter with my kids, so there's just, there's not a lot.
Problem is, all these things that we, we talk about are, are big money.
One thing about, I just want to bring up about indoor facilities. It takes like, for example, like the pool, it takes a three-month facility into a 12-month facility. You know, it creates a whole different type of facility when, when it could be open year round, especially here in Michigan, where our, unfortunately, our summers are limited.
Don't know if you remember or not, but in one of the original school millages, way back, there was a proposal that included, in the expansion of the, of the school, the high school, a pool. And it was, it was voted down. And, and the, and the school system had to downsize their, their request for millage in order to get it to pass. So, you know, that was, that was 25 years ago, maybe.
The township has recently approved, I believe, was it $66 million in school improvements? So maybe they didn't see that differently now.
Could be. Other thoughts on going off island? Okay, have we covered this? We've covered accessibility, we talked about recreation offer, offerings. We've talked about the future of Water's Edge extensively and conservation. I think we're good.
Uh, so we're wanting to transfer, transition over into talking all about economic growth and prosperity, specifically looking at Commerce Park, thinking about the future of Macomb Street, thinking about the DDA. When it comes to this area, Kathleen, do you want to go on ahead and? No, you're all good. Oh, okay. So this for us was a really big section as well. Around one in four survey takers mentioned businesses and entertainment offerings as a challenge. The, the DDA in Macomb Street was mentioned as an opportunity quite a few times, but they also mentioned the desire for a more diverse array of offerings when it comes to areas to be able to, to play, to be able to stay and to be able to spend their time, kind of those third spaces that we like to think of. So the places outside of your home, your work, your school, where you like to spend the majority of your time. So when we're thinking about what could be potential future uses for some of these development sites outside of housing, what are the areas that people most want to go to? And what are the areas that the island itself can support as well when it comes to those businesses? How can we encourage people to shop local, to support those local businesses and to make sure that your DDA really thrives? So with that, we've taken a look at the business recruitment program. We've been evaluating that with our partners over at CIB and with Ross to take a diver, deeper dive. We've also done an updated look at your retail analysis. The prior one that was done during your Economic Enhancement Strategy was conducted just before the pandemic. And so with that, quite a lot has changed. And what we've realized is that we're just now kind of getting over to an area where we're in our kind of new normal. So we've pulled the latest data for the past year of 2023. We're still analyzing some of those results, but we're finding that there are certain categories that are really rising above the, the rest. So the idea of areas such as like a, a small hardware store, like an Ace Hardware, the ability to expand something like your grocery offerings, things like that, being able to support small businesses, entrepreneurs, coworking spaces, are areas that we're starting to see kind of pop up where others are falling off. And so when we're thinking about where those can land, that's a really key question that we have is where do we think is the, the most advantageous use? To be sure that we're really encouraging that those businesses gather together so that way they can create a really supportive ecosystem for each other as well? So with that, we have a couple of different questions. The, the main one is, what can establish Groseal as a local destination for residents and nearby community members to be able to support those local businesses in that economy? How can we encourage residents to shop local? This was a major question that we also knew was posed when it came to the DDA in Macomb Street Plan that we're wanting to really keep at the forefront of the conversation. We think it's important to reemphasize this through your master plan. And then also thinking about which of the, of these businesses that the island can support, do you almost want? Do you almost need? Do we want to really be sure that we are highlighting as an opportunity when we're coming up with these new redevelopment scenarios? We know that one of the examples that was given in the prior plan at one of the sites was a kitchen incubator. That one is no longer necessarily something that we're seeing as super viable. So when we're thinking about what is the new use that we could propose there? What are the ones that we really want to be sure that we are focusing on? Is something that we want to be able to have a conversation about? And lastly, of those that the island can support, which ones are just not sustainable? And how can we best be able to communicate that with the community members when we have our next roundtable around economic growth and prosperity?
All right, let's, let's talk about this. Establishing Macomb Street as a local destination for residents and, and potentially nearby communities to support the local economy and local businesses. Thoughts on that? Well, I'll start off. You know, the, the events that, that have been put on, for example, for example, at Water's Edge, you know, when, when the restaurant was there, you know, they would have, they would have music on a Friday night. People would come with their chairs and they'd sit there and they'd, they'd listen, they'd listen to rock music. Now, we, we sort of, we, we do that in, to a, to a, in a different direction over at the corner. You know, it, it's much more passive type music. It isn't, it isn't rock music, but, but the idea of, of drawing people in for, for these kind of regular special events, if you know what I mean, things that are unusual, you know, gets, gets people involved and engaged. You know, I, I was, I was surprised, I can't remember the number. How many businesses do we have on Macomb Street right now?
At one time it was 70 plus.
70 plus. Now, how many at this table think, would, would think that we had 70 businesses on Macomb? Not me, okay? Why not? Okay, we don't, we don't, we don't know what, we don't know they're there. You know, you know where the hardware store is at, the drugstore and, and Krogers. Okay, and, and a few other things. You know, how, how do they get visibility? Don't know the answer. But, but drawing people, drawing people in for any kind of special event, no matter how creative it might be, certainly offers an opportunity for saying, well, I didn't know that flower shop was there. You know, and that becomes, you know, a destination next time somebody wants flowers. What about it, guys, folks? Other ideas? What about it, guys, folks? Other ideas?
Yeah, I I think the uh the unique thing about Macomb Street that is um that hurts it more than anything else. I mean, aside from our geography, right? We don't, we draw from one direction and essentially nobody's coming across the bridge for the most part to come to our, to our businesses with some very limited exceptions. Uh, but setting that aside, I think the biggest burden we have is that it's so spread out and that, uh, you know, we have basically a quarter miles worth of businesses spread across a full mile. And so what what you end up with is you drive in your car to go to one of the shops and you get back in your car and you drive home, or you potentially might drive to a second one, get out, go in, shop, go back in your car and and drive home. And so, you know, it's, that was always the, you know, the struggle is how do you, you know, there's a one point where we talked about a, you know, an east business district and a west business district and housing in between, uh, and try to push everything to the two different ends and try to coordinate what types of businesses were in each end. Um, you know, it's hard to say to somebody, okay, we want you to move your business that, you know, is one of the, one of the few that's surviving. We want you to close it up here and move it to another place because we think it's going to help the overall vitality of the of the street. Um, you know, it's just, it it becomes very difficult to do. There's uh a lot of different ideas. Um, I I I was on the DDA. You think you ran the DDA, right? So uh, she she knows more than I do, but um, you know, there were a lot of people would come in and say, oh, you guys screwed it up twenty-five years ago when you put all the parking in the back and took off the street front parking. And so you got to tear it all up and put street front parking back in. And um, you know, I, I don't know that that's a solution, um, but there, there are certain kind of, um, I, as I think about the thing that we always ran into a problem there was just that spread that there isn't the, you don't get out and walk from one shop to the next like you might when you go to Wyandotte. You know, you you park at one spot, you might stop at two or three others potentially, right? If you're going to go to more than one, you're generally going to park your car and then walk from one spot to the other and then get back to your car. So just in in um encourages more of that, you know, multiple stop shopping.
I think one thing that that definitely affects the how spread out our Macomb Street district is, is, and it's something that we can actually change, is our landscape requirements. And and it's been a while since we've reviewed a building on Macomb Street, at least a meeting that I've been to. But I believe, you know, there's ten foot required for one property and ten foot required for another property. That's twenty feet of landscaping where there's no business where, so it actually, you know, makes makes your walk much farther, you know. Um, existing buildings are, existing houses and buildings are closer together, but there's a lot of landscape requirements currently for a, for a what's supposed to be a downtown walkable district.
Well, another thing that could potentially be encouraged, you know, and where we have vacancies. I mean, this commission has has approved conversion from business to residential, you know, where we're now, we're bringing more people onto the street just because they live there. Uh, you know, that, that's a viable option.
I think earlier we talked about economies of scale and Macomb Street is where I'd want to look at ways to encourage that sort of.
Uh, economy of scale. Um, so I, what I like to see is multi-use, you know, so like a first floor retail type thing with maybe a floor or two of apartments above, you know, I think that that's the sort of thing I think could ideally help with some of the the density and some of the walkability that I think we're all talking about here. Um, and then I I think, I mean, when you all early made proposals, I loved your idea of a coworking space. I think, I mean, I really, Michigan's very, very fortunate and, or at least we are here, having multiple broadband options, you know, and and even three, I think there's like three. You can have like an AT&amp;T gigabit fiber here for businesses. So like, those are things that I think uh make make this a very attractive place for folks that are thinking about remote work or remote working space. The 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 places that I've seen work well, there's like a converted bank on Macomb Street, and that doesn't seem like it's set up to be a coworking space, but it's become one and seems to be doing really well. But more, more like that, I think, could could help bring folks there and and make people want to want to work and spend time there.
Well, it's not such a big factor now, but you know, in a few years it will be, and that's EV charging stations. I mean, you know, we have all these, these, these uh buildings that have uh immense parking, you know, associated with them, long before we had parking standards that was put in that way. You know, that sort of thing would be, would be uh potentially very good opportunity for someone entrepreneur to uh to make use of. And again, what does it do? It brings people into the, into Macomb Street.
Do you want to require EV charging and zoning? I mean, we're amending ordinances all the time to require it, or at least to require outfitting it with the um, the technology, the the bandwidth of the the electricity. I mean, not that you're having a ton of development happening in parking lots along Macomb Street, but still, that's.
Okay, uh.
I have a couple of thoughts. Sorry, John, I didn't jump in because I was kind of curious what everyone else would say, but um, I think, um, you know, encouraging different types of um businesses. I don't, you know, I think in years past, and this was always a a problem when I did sit on the DDA was recruiting, um, you know, kind of thinking outside of the residents who live in Grozeal owning a business in Grozeal and thinking about, okay, how do we bring in, you know, folks who, um, you know, have, uh, you know, one time like a a wine, um, a wine distributor, bringing them in and having a tasting room or something like that, where it was like more of a destination place or brewery, but but not someone starting from scratch or someone who's a hobbyist, but someone who is in the business and knows how to run it and run it well and will be here um and more sustainable, but be here for the long run. Um, but maybe it's, you know, some more unique, smaller spaces like that, um, and getting creative with that, I think, would help. Um, I think encouraging open hours, I don't know how we go about that, but there's seventy businesses. But the reason you don't know that they're there, John, is because maybe twenty percent of them participate in events that we host. Um, maybe twenty percent of them have reasonable open hours, you know, because you do get a lot of the people who are like, I'd like to own, uh, you know, a shop. And then the shop stays shuttered for years because they get bored of it. And we don't have anything, to my knowledge, that I could dig up that, you know, demands kind of, hey, let's, this isn't a museum, you know, unless, we need open hours. If you're going to be located in the business district, we're going to encourage people to visit, then you have to be at least open for eight hours in a week or something, right? You have to be open in, you know, past two o'clock in the afternoon. So things like that. Um, I think some amount of Wi-Fi, I think you started to bring it up maybe, Kyle, but some amount of like accessibility Wi-Fi, we lose signals down on that East River end. So the chances of someone, and I know I keep bringing it back to mom, but I'm like picturing myself when I had three little ones, I just needed to get out of the house. I would stroll, I lived in Plymouth at the time, I would stroller down. I would bring like a bag of money, go spend, buy things at the little toy shop, get a coffee at Panera, sit in the park, check my phone, you know, my kids are running around. Um, that, that's, that burns hours and it burns money. Um, and I think to that end too, we talk a lot in the community about things for the kids and we, then we get laser-focused on a playscape. And what for for me, what I picture on Macomb isn't necessarily like a primary colored playscape with mulch. It's like, you know, kids can get creative in a lot of different ways. So we could think of different ways to use the spaces that we have on Macomb, but providing some kind of active space, you know. Um, and maybe that could even shift and change. I know some major cities, and I think I brought this up before, New York, Philly, I mean, those are big cities, but they just find a random alleyway and they throw out some couches in season and um and, you know, cornhole boards and huge Jenga. And suddenly you have like a mini gathering and that could be great for our teens who also need some direction sometimes on things and places to go. So that would be, that's, you know, I think that would kind of fall under activating some of those areas. And then lastly, I think we have really large vacancies. The the buildings that are vacant are large and they're aging and and they're, they're going to continue to decline. So if we could find a way quickly to either bring in multiple owners in one space or, you know, find a better way to use those spaces. But the three in particular, I mean, they're, they're large spaces for um to design and and it's intimidating for for a business owner to to come into and develop. So those are my random thoughts.
Okay, other thoughts?
The last thing, I know economic growth and prosperity, I think we're right to focus on Macomb, but other areas, you mentioned EV charging. I actually think Waters Edge would be really good for EV charging. And maybe even some requests for proposals for like a kayak rental type thing off of Waters Edge, I think could be pretty cool. And I use Flat Rock as an example there. They got a cool kind of thing at Water Tacos and along the Huron River there. I think it could be a way to bring people in and and get folks shopping at our, at the, at Tipsy, or eating at Tipsy Fish there.
Okay.
Then, well, with that, I swear.
Quality of life, is it? I think this is the last one, isn't it?
This is our last one, we swear. We're almost there, everybody. So quality of life, this for us was a really big catch-all, but one that we thought was really important to still be able to talk about. And the reason why we wanted to have it towards the end is because we think that it does a really good job of rounding out a a master plan and reemphasizing the focus on the people themselves, especially when we know that community members, when they were talking about what they love about Grozeal, the reasons that they moved to the township in the first place, it all has to do with that sense of community, the ability to connect with others, to connect with nature. So being able to emphasize that quality of life, how you all as a township are providing that is really key to us. Um, so with that, this is an area where we will be talking about uh the the different aspects that make up that quality of life. So part of that is your education, your learning facilities, how those are connected to other assets. We'll be talking about recreation itself, um, those places to play, those places to learn, those places where you are safe. Um, so that's where we're also talking all about your police, your fire, your other services such as that. Um, and then talking also about those essential utilities that help to contribute. So that would be your public Wi-Fi, how you are able to connect digitally with people, especially in this day and age. We see that as a a rising prominence that is not going away. Um, and something that will be especially important, um, not only during your everyday life, but also when it comes to times such as emergency services and things like that. Um, and so when we're thinking about the the long-term health of community residents, when we're thinking about the fact that the average age of a community member in the township has increased by ten years since the last plan, when we're thinking about how they are connected to their health services, all of these are components of quality of life that we're thinking of right here. So in this chapter, we'll be talking about those very specific components, but also about how this is meeting the current needs of our residents as well as attracting future residents to the area and thinking about their needs. So it's a good kind of a mix of both. Um, we'll be talking about history as well, public art are all kind of incorporated under here. So with that, I think a a way to kind of ground ourselves is really with this first question, how can we sustain the population to ensure the township can continue providing quality services? This gets at uh your your millages, your funding, your staff capacity, how we are able to ensure that the the current residents are having their needs met as well as your new residents as times shift, um, and as those roles change. How can we attract younger families and children? Um, thinking about the fact that there is this turnover, we are wanting for people to be able to age in place. Um, we want to be sure that we are providing those necessary services for people to age in place while also meeting that other need at the end of the spectrum. Also thinking about how communities are engaged. Um, this is in quite a few different ways, but specifically when it comes to arts and programming. Um, so when we're thinking about your beautification committee, who is a part of that committee? How are we making sure that through our arts, through our signage, through the way that we are welcoming people into the community that they feel and see themselves represented and invited onto the island? Um, and then also asking, just in general, when it comes to that topic, we spent quite a bit of time when we were talking all about mobility, about the sense of welcoming. And so we were wondering, should that have its own sort of chapter? So that way we can uh talk all about the prominence of that feeling and how that is accomplished on the island? Or do we think that it is sufficient to have it within this chapter? And then the last one is a very technical question. This can be a a quick yes or no, but is the library still a City of Trenton facility? Yes. All right. And one question done. So with that, John, do you want to take it away?
Okay. Um, let's start with the first one. How to sustain the population to ensure the township can continue providing quality services? This implies that the population is going to decrease?
It's.
And from what I recall from the uh these, the information you provided before, uh, it really wasn't over the next twenty years.
It's projected to essentially have been.
Basically staying flat.
Stabilized. Yes. So it's essentially got very, very slight increase over time. Um, but thinking about the fact that that increase in population is not a one-to-one. Um, so it's not necessarily a a change in population where we are seeing the same number of children, the same number of aging residents. It's pretty disproportionate over time if you look at how people have aged in the community. Um, so part of the reasons that for the school consolidation rate is that we are having less children. Part of that is just family dynamics have changed over the past twenty years. Family sizes are smaller. Um, and so we're in general across Michigan communities and really nationwide, seeing a shrinking when it comes to schools and the need for those types of facilities. Um, but also thinking about when it comes to providing quality services, we're wanting to bookend it, right? So we're trying to think of that's where really those next two questions come in. They're really interwoven together. Um, when you think about it, when we're talking about quality services, how are we providing that for all of the different people, even as those kind of needs stop stagger over the next twenty years?
Okay. Thoughts?
I'll take, I'll take the first crack. How's that? Uh, I I think the, um, what I think, in answer to that first question, it, I think back to the discussion we had earlier about the, you know, affordability and and, you know, kids moving here after college and that sort of thing. And I think, you know, historically, it's, it's been very common that people who grow up here, who want to live here, right? Not everybody who grows up here wants to, but those that do um will oftentimes live in Wyandotte or Trenton or someplace nearby and then, um, you know, for a starter home and then, and then move back, right? And and I think that's a sustainable uh model for the township, you know, it doesn't, it's not the only model that could work. Uh, but that draw has to be there, right? There has to be a reason for them to want to come back. And I think that's what we maybe miss out on at some points where, uh, whether it's the housing stock, you know, this, this isn't the, you know, the house that they want to live in, or it's the uh amenities that are offered, the, you know, the the mix of parks and recreation and that sort of thing, all the things that we've been talking about, right? So it doesn't necessarily mean we have to appeal to them when they're twenty-two years old, but maybe when they're twenty-seven years old. And that's, you know, the, the, the history of our schools is always that the, the grades always grew, the the population of each grade always grew because the kid, you know, they tried to get here before kindergarten, and then they tried, you know, tried to get here before uh middle school or junior high, tried to get here before high school, you know, that sort of thing. And so the the numbers would grow and that, I'm not sure that that's sustained. Uh, and so part of that is the draw of the school district itself and the quality of the schools. And part of it is all the other things that we talked about. So, uh, you know, when I think about sustaining the population, that's, that's really what kind, and attracting younger families and children, I think it's a matter of, um, you know, we may not be all things to all people. Um, you know, we may not be able to offer everything from, you know, like the entire life continuum, but if we can pick them up, uh, then, then, then you get them raising their children here, which is, uh, which keeps people invested, keeps people voting yes on millages, whether it's for the schools or other things, um, you know, all the things that make the township, um, what it, what makes it unique. And if we, um, if that population continues to age too much, then I think we run the risk that, um, uh, people lose the appreciation for the reasons why they moved here in the first place.
Thoughts?
No, I think, I think Jay summed it up really well. Um, I do think there's an interesting dynamic in Grozeal, and maybe it's also just a small town community thing in general, but it's a worry that I have, um, or we'll call it a worry bead, is a lot of the things, the programming, the things that we offer um as a community are volunteer-generated and volunteer-based, very heavy on volunteerism. And it tends to be something that I think generationally i- is is thought of differently. So I do worry about the sustainability of some of the programs and the offerings that we have or that we've all come, become used to and accustomed to. Um, because as I, I think our, our, the mindsets change, um, have changed over time and continue to change, and people don't, don't understand or appreciate the need for the volunteerism in the community to make these things happen. So I think we're going to have to get more creative in the next, in the coming years to bridge those gaps for some of those things that if we want to offer um all of these things and and programs and um have all of these recreation opportunities, then we have to either figure out a way as a township to pay for those, to make, maintain and keep those available, or find a way to make it more attractive to more people to volunteer and 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 keep those programs running. I don't know what the answer is to that, but. I don't know what the answer is to that, but.
Additional thoughts?
I think that these are some of the key questions that are really this, part of this whole process, right? Is how do we sustain the population and get it where we want? I guess one question I have, and I suspect you don't have the data now, but from a census standpoint, I mean, are our demographics really changing that much? I mean, it seems like we've always got about 125 kids per grade in the school for as long as I can remember. So is that data really changing or is that just a perceived or perception?
We're losing enrollment, yeah, at the schools, yeah.
I think, yeah, and I think from the school strategy, meeting, what I thought was interesting is Michigan overall is losing a lot of that demographic. And then, and then Wayne County even is, is, you know, kind of on the downward side. So it's also like a planning thing, like how do we get a bigger piece of that pie in Groseal? So if we're like, you know, the Wayne County hub or whatever, you know, that kind of thing. So I know the school was planning for a decline, but it was based on not just Groseal, it was based on like Michigan. And the point you made earlier too, that families aren't as big anymore, people, although in Groseal, I don't know, there's a lot of big families here.
We, we've talked about increasing the, the density, you know, for, you know, for a younger community and also for older community. But also I'm raising the question too, is, is it, is it a bad thing to keep our population where it is? There's also the, you know, what can our infrastructure here in Groseal handle? I, I know it was before my time, but I know there was a whole big book was developed, maximum, this maximum build-up report, like what can the utilities in the island handle? What can the roads on the island handle? Roads are already terrible. What, you know, what can they handle? If, if we were to increase the density of the island, would it necessarily be a good thing or, or that would cause some other problems that we'd have to look at?
Just to answer some of the questions you have here, should arts and culture, I'd even add history there, have its own chapter, I'd say yes. A long history of amazing artists on Groseal and folks that contribute not only in Groseal but across the region, members of Downriver Council for the Arts, et cetera. And finally, I'll just say, for me, I think a lot of folks have already touched on it, but when the last master plan was done, there was an assumption probably right at the time that, that development was going too quickly and things needed to slow down. And I think we're at a stage now where we're kind of in a little bit of the opposite place where not just us, but the whole region is suffering from, from folks leaving and not, not coming. So we've got to do, I think, more to retain people and, and be attractive to people, so, and finding ways to encourage people to stay here and do that. So that's, that's what, what I'd, what I'd encourage us all towards.
Thank you.
I have, I'm sorry, do you have more?
Please.
I was just going to say, I have one thought on the aging population, and I don't know how to go about achieving this or recruiting this, but this might be something also that's a fulfillment in terms of unique businesses, but concierge medical care is a big one in Florida. And, and, you know, the idea being that people stay in place longer and, you know, we have Dr. Callid in the urgent care here, which is wonderful, but I know he's busting at the seams, I, it feels like most days. So I didn't know if there was an opportunity there to think about concierge care, things like that to offer in, in some way, shape or form.
I thought there was some interesting information in, in the statistics you provided on population, which, which, which kind of helped me with the, gave me a little bit different perspective. When I looked at the, the age group five to nine, or less than five to nine, that actually increased from 2000 to 2000, was it 2000 to 2020 or 2010 to 2020? I don't remember. But that age group actually went up. The, the group that Jay's talking about, the 20 to 24, went down, okay? And, and like he said, that's probably the, the college students, the people ending up in Wyandotte. But then you get the 25 to 42, 25 to 44 age groups, the population actually went up, which probably accounts for why you see the increase in the five to nine age groups.
By the way, if you have another question.
But the biggest loss was actually in the 45 to 54 age group. Okay? That's, that's, that's where the, the largest decrease in the population in the, in the, in the island occurred. You can kind of rationalize that by the fact that these are people that are, they're at the prime of their, their business careers or their careers and, and business factors, automotive downsizing, who knows what, you know, driving people off the island. By the time you get to 55 to 64, it's stable. So, you know, I'm not sure searching out, searching out younger, younger people in and of itself is the only thing that, that we ought to be considering. Is there any way that we can influence the 45 to 54-year-old group? I don't know. But it, it, the, the data does not suggest that we have an automatic problem with not enough young people, from, at least from the distribution. Now, obviously, the population is getting older with folks in my age group, you know, the baby boomers increasing, but, you know, there comes a point where that ends.
So John, are you suggesting 45 is not young?
I was going to say the same thing.
I'll take my foot out of my mouth now, thank you.
I just know I'm not. I stand with you, 45-year-olds, so.
So you say. Anyway. I, I just, just suggesting that perhaps looking at this data in, in a little bit different context might, might be helpful as we plan out where, where we want things to go.
I mean, at least for me, that's partly a generational thing, right? You got the baby boomer generation, which is enormous, and then their kids are millennials, which is my, my generation. So that's, that's, those are the two biggest population kind of groups, but then when you get to Gen Z and younger, they start really kind of coming off. So that's where we're having some-
And I think it definitely, to your point, came from the school enrollment, enrollment side of things. It's less from the, just, just the age cohorts in the census. It was the trends that the school district's seeing.
Well, and with the age cohorts too, that's a really good point, John, and something that we want to keep in mind too, is also the big dip that you see when it comes to the, the age cohorts. So there is kind of this bubble that you'll see in that like 10 to 19 kind of range, and then it dips quite down by a bit when it comes to like your 20 to 40s, and then it bulges it back out quite a bit from there, rather than being your kind of typical pyramid. And so when we're thinking about within, in context too, as well, being able to kind of sustain and make that, sorry.
Yeah, when the 45 to 50-year-old, 54-year-old families leave, they take their teenage children with them, you know, which, which then, which attributes why you see that, that big drop-off, you know, in that, in that age group, you know? So, you know, it, it isn't just the parents that move.
Right. It's odd though, because that's most of the housing that we have on this island is to fit that demographic.
Exactly. Yeah, I know, like for me, that my house on Groseal was, was my third house, okay? And, and I know when we were looking to where to move and, and what to look at, you know, we looked at, we didn't know it at the time, but R1B neighborhoods. Why? Because we had a young daughter and we wanted to have kids around. We didn't want a house that was, that was a half a mile down, you know, away by a big house and, and you're too far away from the neighbors. Okay? So living in a, finding a neighborhood on Groseal, which, which was compact, which R1B was for us, you know, was perfect for us. So, you know, different neighborhoods, different styles, all affecting quality of life. Have we covered this or is there more?
Well then, thank you all so much for your time and for staying late with us, to be able to share your insights. We really appreciate it. And just note the conversations are still going. We have our next survey is already posted live. Ross and team have already sent out some blasts and we're continuing to promote that online, but we also have some in-person engagement coming up, which we would love to see you all at. We're inviting everybody on our email list service, we're inviting the community, we're inviting our various commissions and advisory committees as well. So if you are interested in joining, we'll be sending out this information as well, but you can also scan the QR code, it'll take you directly to our registration site for you to be able to sign up. We'll be doing two major kind of in-person workshops. So we will be having one at the Groseal High School, we'll be doing a youth workshop with students, which we are really, really excited about. We are partnering with the superintendent and others to be able to have one with them and chat all about what they see as the future of Groseal. From there, we'll be, uh, meeting with the public to chat all about the future of Commerce Park, and later on in the evening, all about Water's Edge, which is very exciting. And then we'll be having a series of virtual roundtables the following week. So we'll be having one to kick us off on economic growth, jobs and retail, we'll be joined by our consultant team at CIB. We'll be sharing some of those preliminary results from our market study as well to be able to provide some additional context to the community and asking them some of those questions. We'll be having one around housing, another one around open spaces and waterfronts, and then the last one around mobility to round us out.
How is this going to be, be communicated in detail to the public? What, how, is it, is there going to be a mailing? Is there going to be emails? Is there going to be postings? How is this? This is exactly where the public input needs to come in, right here. I mean, all of us, you know, the, the, the eight of us up here brainstormed, you know, or seven of us did, did a really good job of looking at different things and with an open mind and, and, and considering different options. But obviously the public, you know, needs, needs to have, have their say in this. So how is this going to be communicated?
Yep. So we have 500 mailers that we are sending out. Those ones are targeted. We realized through our first survey that we had a pretty big gap when it came to those who are lower income, when it came to our renters especially, and to some of our younger populations. So most of those mailers will be going out to our apartment complexes, to condos. So Ross has already had, had those coordinated. We have a couple of extras as well that we'll be able to send out. Following that, I think, how many, Ross, were extras?
A hundred, and I have them here at Township Hall and I also gave them to Sacred Heart as well. So they're kind of scattered about.
All of our former posters that we have as well, that QR code automatically relinks people back to the website, so that way they'll be able to see all of this engagement. It's posted live on our website. We also have it posted on social media. We'll be sending out a red alert. We have an email list serve, so everybody who filled out the first survey or who went onto our website and let us know that they would like to stay informed has given us their email. So an email has already gone out to them. We invite you all, we've invited our steering committee members to also promote it through their personal networks, so we know that the Nature and Land Conservancy is planning to boost it in their newsletter. We've talked with the school district all about sending that one out to their listserv so that way parents and students can also see it. That was how we were able to get some of our students in our first kind of round of engagement as well. But if there are other ways that we can promote it, most definitely let us know, or feel free to let others know.
Question on the dates here, I think they might be a little off. Monday is like, there's a May 6th or, I think May 2nd is not the right date there, so I just want to figure out what, what-
Oh, yes, sorry. That would be Tuesday, May 2nd.
Correct. Once you go, go to scan, all those dates are correct. On, on, right here is not correct, but once you scan in and then login.
Thursday, May 2nd is what we're looking at, or no?
Thursday, May 2nd, sorry.
Okay, gotcha. And so then it'd be, it'd be Monday, May 6th, gotcha, okay, now I see it. Now we're, now we're looking good.
Well, it sounds like you've, you've definitely covered a lot of the bases for, for communication and, and so not knowing would perhaps be difficult. So that's the way you want it. The one suggestion I might have, and this would be something the township would do, I mean, if you want to meet, if you want to meet the citizens of Groseal, go get in the lobby of the Kroger store at nine o'clock on Saturday morning and stay there till noon. You could, you will pass out a thousand of the pamphlets or whatever, or surveys or whatever you want to communicate face to face.
Mr. Chair, if you're volunteering-
Yeah, just go say it. Handout. First, first base.
You know, that, that is, is the, is the main intersection of the community.
I might volunteer, I might do that if you want me to, so I'm willing to do it.
Whatever.
We can give you a sign, yeah.
You guys, you guys, and, and think about it, just another way. One more, one more tool in the toolbox, that's all.
Yeah, absolutely.
Also, what about the township's communication, where they send, where they send a text message? I, I go-
Yep. We did that for our first survey. We're going to be doing that again. We're going to send, because this is going to be open for a few months, correct?
Yes, this will be open for the majority of the summer. I believe that we had said through end of July.
Yep.
So we're wanting to be able to keep it open as long as possible to continue to get feedback. We expect that we'll probably see a little bit of a spike as we tend to, right? When it first goes out, kind of following these engagement sessions, we usually try and have everybody sign on for the last five minutes and fill it out, which is a good way to get people to actively spend some of their time and be able to give us some written feedback. But yeah, so we'll be able to have a couple of different touchpoints there.
Okay.
Do schools have something like a backpack program, I think? I don't know if you've all done that, but you can send everything home with the kids? Yeah.
Well, Kat, thank you very much. You were well-prepared, made good presentations. We were obviously well on our way and this is very good. So thank you very much for your efforts.
Thank you all. We're excited to be back soon.
Okay, at this point, we'll bring it back to the table and I think we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move.
Support? All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you very much.